No.
Where is he going? Oh, spring home.
Good evening. I'm going to reconvene this regular Board of Education meeting for February 9th, 2023. We'll open with our roll call and then we'll do our pledge. Clerk Coffee.
Present.
Trustee Venegas.
Present.
Trustee Pazadi.
Present.
Vice President Wong will be absent tonight. I too am present. And we also have our student board member Elliot Halkan. Did I say that correctly?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, great. Mr. Moisich, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible.
Thank you. Okay, announcements of action taken in closed session. We had Government Code Section 54957, Public Employee Discipline Dismissal Release, information received. Government Code Section 54957.6, Conference with Labor Negotiators, WSTA, CSEA, and Management, information received. And that takes us to the agenda. Are there any changes to this agenda? All right, then can I have an approval of the agenda?
I move.
Okay. Moved by Trustee Venegas.
I second.
Seconded by Trustee Pazadi. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye too. Vote aye. Celebrations and communications. We have a celebration of our Assistant Superintendent Sam Moisich, service to Washington Unified School District,
Dr. Hildreth.
Yes, it's my pleasure to have us all celebrate a great person. So I'm going to come down in the front and then Stan, you have to come with me.
There is no if, ands.
Okay, well, good evening. It's nice to see you on this side. And I do want to make sure that before we start our meeting or end our meeting, that we have this opportunity for the trustees to acknowledge the work of Mr. Stanley Moisich, who has been probably every, almost every role in the district, so except probably student. I don't think you were a student here. But started as a teacher in our district, has taught elementary, taught middle grades, has been an administrator. I'm sure at some point you were somebody's coach doing something because with all of that energy, I know you were using that somehow. So I'm going to tell my own, how famous Stan is. So I, the new person to West Sacramento, I was at a doctor's appointment. And when the doctor asked me, oh, what do you do? And I said, oh, I'm a district administrator. And he asked me where, and I said, where I worked. And he said, do you know Stan Moisich? And I said, well, as a matter of fact, I do. And he went on to tell me that Stan was his fifth grade teacher, and how much he remembered Stan. Now, he's a fully employed doctor at this point. But he also talked about his nephew or something, or someone graduated from River City maybe last year, and that he attended the ceremony and he had to make sure that he went and found Mr. Moisich to say hello, and what an impact he made on his life. So I think that story exemplifies Stan, and who I've had the pleasure to work with for these last two and a half years. It was a hard entry, coming in the middle of lockdown and Zoom. And who did we go to for information? Stan. He is the historian. He has the relationships. He's the person that people trust. He is the one who, when you want to know something's happening, go ask Stan because somebody has told Stan what they need. And then Stan is going to figure out, how do I make that happen? Because that's who he is. He cares about students, and he cares about staff. So his going on to professional growth, I mean, that's something that takes great courage. That's not something a lot of people are willing to do after 25, 30 years in the same place to say, I think I'm ready. I think I'm ready to make a different kind of a difference. And so that's what Stan has the opportunity to do, taking over Assistant Superintendent duties for Yolo County Office of Ed. I have told Garth Lewis, Superintendent, how lucky he is to have Stan on his team. And I think it makes it a little bit easier for us because he's still going to be our go to and supporting not only Washington Unified, but being able to support us here in Yolo County. So Stan, we appreciate you. We wanted to present you with this plaque. It says, presented to Stanley Moisich in appreciation for your service and dedication of nearly 30 years to Washington Unified School District on February 9th, 2023. And then we have this plant for you. And if we could all stand and give Stan a round of applause. Before Stan says anything, you're all, you're right. I do also want to acknowledge that as we're going to try and find someone who can take over Stan's duty, because I'm not going to say we play Stan because that's not possible. But we do have an interim who's going to be assisting to make sure Stan's work with his team continues. So I do want to introduce Dr. Ann Zeeman. She is our interim Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services, and she's here to support us as we begin a rigorous hiring search for a new Assistant Soup of Ed Services. So with that, Stan?
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, thank you. I will, you, we won't have to, hopefully you don't have to turn on the three minute timer. Hopefully I'll be quicker, quick, quick on this public comment. Well, thank you, Dr. Hildreth, for all those kind words. Very, very appreciated. And you know, part of the great work of being at Washington Unified is I always felt part of a family and a team here in West Sacramento. So that that has really been critical. And in the work that we do, no matter what the hardships or challenges, because you know, there are plenty in public education, we faced quite a bit the last few years. You know, Dr. Hildreth's first month, we're, you know, we, she, I and Matt Ains were spent a whole weekend together building hybrid schedules. And so, you know, in going back to those days, there's a lot of challenges and challenges yet to come. But I've always felt the support from the Board of Education, from each of you. I've gotten to know Clerk Coffee briefly, you know, now that she's here, but I know she's going to do a great job. Some of the rest of you I've known a bit longer. And, and you're just with our team in the city of West Sacramento, hey, I've always felt the wind at my sails. So, you know, that has always made the difference for me and made it easy to do, to go through those challenges, knowing that I have that wind at my sails. So it is bittersweet to leave. A lot of challenges, things I would love to still have accomplished. We've done our best. Felt like the team has always done their best to support not just me, but the work that we're doing. I have total faith that we're doing great things here at WSD, and we're going to continue to do so. I'm so lucky that I still get to support you from a different position. So that that has really been, that's something that was really important to me, that I'm able to do that. So much thanks to all of you here and everywhere. So thank you very much. And going to take this and put this somewhere where I can see it every day. And this plant, I'm going to do my best to take care of it. So, but you know, usually, usually cactus is the best I can do. So I'll see if I can, I'll see what I can do with this right here. But it looks very nice. And so thank you all.
I think we should also take a picture. So hold on just a minute. And if there's any comments, okay. Oh, there's public comment.
Well, I don't know if there isn't.
Oh, okay. Yes. Okay. Well, your comment. Go ahead.
I just, you know, Stan, it's been eight years that I've gotten the opportunity to know you. And it started when you were a principal at River City High School. I can only say that you're the institution, you know, 30 years in this district, your institutional memory, you're the historian, you know, you basically teach me about things that I didn't know, as well as many other teachers and classified staff have helped me, you know, along the way in learning. But you have also certainly been one that explained to me why things are. And I want to say I appreciate that. So, you know, it's been a long eight years, a long set of struggles that went up and down, you know, from, you know, incredible turmoil when I first came on the board, you know, with, you know, contract issues, to COVID, to, you know, what have you. It hasn't been easy. But you have been a rock for, you know, many of us to glean knowledge from, and especially understanding why certain things are the way they are. And I want to say, I can't tell you how much I appreciate that. And as well as your calming influence, like, you know, I've really appreciated the way that you seem to have, you know, kept at least me calm when I hear your voice, you know. I tend to have that same effect with Dr. Hildreth. She, whenever she speaks, I tend to feel, okay, I'm not going to lose my, lose my buttons so easily, right? You have that same effect. And I think it's a quality that is admirable, admirable to have, because I certainly don't. And I admire it when I see it. So congratulations, and best of luck on your new adventures at YCOE.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Right. No, wait, 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 wait. All right.
They're still going to do a picture.
So, so I once heard that it's not how long you know someone, it's how you know someone. I've had the opportunity to get to know you in the last two years or so. And you just, you know, you added that verb, I'm about that action, right? Like you add care, you make care into a verb, you make support into a verb, and humility. And I think it's what, it's the why people get into education. It's what you represent. So you've led by example. I consider you a mentor, even though you, you wouldn't give yourself that title, I know that. But, but I truly have learned a lot from you. And, and it's what, you're like glued to the community in a sense. So thank you for what you've done. I'm proud to see your growth and development the last two years from the, from the moment I met you. And, and I know that you move with intent, and you move with purpose. And I know that wherever you go, you're going to pour your heart into it. So I'm glad you're still part of Yolo. And, and, and I'm looking forward to working with you at the YCOE level. So congratulations, and keep being you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I'm new. So I didn't really get as much time as everybody else did. So I don't have much to say other than I wish you the best. I know wherever it is you go, you will keep us in the back of your mind, or in the front of your mind, and when you're making decisions. And just fly like an eagle. Well, this Sunday.
Thank you.
I'm thinking about a meeting, a parent meeting at River City. When you were the principal, and parents, I don't remember the topic, but it was about, it was around safety. And parents were nervous, and they were worried, and they were coming to a meeting, and they were heated and emotional. And, and you gave them all of the facts, and the students' first perspective, and really just brought calm to the space, and made parents feel reassured, and know that you were there to take care of their kids. And that has been true of every step that we have gone through COVID, and every other piece, having our students first, and then also always having your staff's voice, and giving us the authentic perspective of what's happening. And you've always had a really good pulse of what people need and what people are thinking. And you're a really, really good advocate for not only the students, but also for everyone in this organization. And so I want to thank you for that. And I'm glad that you will not be far, and that you will influence Washington Unified and continue to make an impact in a different way. But you will be missed.
Thank you.
So we're going to come get a picture with you, though. Okay. So that takes us now to our association reports. And we have our student board member up first on the agenda tonight. Elliot, take it away.
Thank you guys all for having me. So I believe we have some slides. All right. So they aren't, oh, there we go. All right. So I'm just going to go over some of the things I've been going over, going around WSD, and then also give some updates of my own from River City as we have homecoming coming up. All right. So first, we start off with Bridgeway. They have some academic achievement awards they've been giving out for all their students who have had high GPAs, which is great to see that many students. They just went on a field trip. I believe this, most of the schools went on this. So I'm just going to say it like once. All the schools went on the same field trip, and they'd like to give a big thank you to Dr. Hildreth and the Team WSD. Every single slide has it, though. And they just had their winter concert with an outstanding performance. At Riverbrink, they just had a teddy bear health clinic, where they brought in some teddy bears, learned about mental health, stuff like that. And they have autograms, which is, I believe, like kidney grams, basically, for Valentine's Day. Elkhorn, they just had their first crab feed as a parent booster event. And they said it was a lot of fun, with lots of food, music, raffle, and crab. So, yes. Southport, their third graders, TK through third, enjoyed a reading from Crystal Patterson's book, Inspired to Be Me, which sounded pretty cool. They like to thank their BTO. They went to the Crocker Art Museum to provide opportunities to learn more about art, which is like good, and you got your hands on stuff. Students also participated in the schoolwide Take Pride in Yourself in Southport event this week. So I don't know much about that, but sounds interesting. Students who participated in the school fundraiser just sold almost all of their items and are excited to play on the game truck. So I wish we got that here. So we might have to do something like that at River City. At Stonegate, they also went to the field trip, like I've been saying, a Black History Month show, which was, they all said was very, very cool. My brother actually went, and he said it was actually a lot of fun, and they all had a great time. They also had their band concert with families involved and students, and they had a great show. I wasn't able to go, but my brother was kind of mad at me, I'm not going to lie. And then they had their semicircuit come to Stonegate with motivational messages for their first through fifth graders to enjoy active circuits, great exercises, and like singing and songs like that. They also had their web team do a, like, in-school rally, and a Penny Wars fundraiser to help raise over $2,000 for their activities. So River City will now be doing the Penny Wars fundraiser, just so everybody knows. At Westmore, their PBIS posters have arrived, and they're going to be putting them up through school. Secretaries, noon, noon duty cafeteria personnel help students understand schoolwide positive behaviors for, yeah, this stuff. I believe it's those posters, the PBIS posters. And then they get congrats to WMOASES for always providing fun activities. So it looks like a parachute thing. I always remember that thing from when I was like in kindergarten. So that looks fun. In Westfield, they also went on the field trip, saw the show. They all said it was very cool. Their second grade class got to do Paper Dragons for Lunar New Year a few weeks ago. And then their Bridges of Success class had an opportunity to go rock climbing with their Green Light Get Outside mentors, and they had a great time for team building and skill confidence. The Virtual Academy, their January traits are thinkers and knowledgeable. On January 30th, they had students on campus for in-person learning day, and they had many activities for all of them. Their February trait is team player, and they're excited to celebrate iReady for all their students and the testing. Yeah. For the Evergreen Elementary Opportunity, their students got to work on some college interns, with some college interns, I mean, and on Green Light Go Outside. No shots are taken until at least two passes are made. Sounds interesting. And students competed in the classes, and they had a lot of fun and team building stuff. Washington Adult School, they'd like to thank Ms. Imelda Subia for organizing an amazing field trip to the Van Gogh Experience. I've actually seen that around. Looks very cool. And their Director Groat for making this happen. Students love it. They had three more high school graduates graduate, obviously, and their students overcame a number of barriers to get there. So they're thankful for all their teachers, anyone who helped them. At Yolo, their staff worked to focus on student support rigor and connecting to the student interest. And they look forward to furthering the work. They like to thank Director Briggs, Director Groat. They have esports on campus. They're very grateful and excited to have this opportunity for their students to have some fun, maybe let loose a little bit, right? And they're excited to announce their March Madness campaign to celebrate their students being vibe, visionary-inspired, bold, engaged in campus around for strong attendance. Washington Middle, they celebrated their Amazing Counselors of the Week with a little poster. Their Culture Club led a school-wide West Indian celebration with traditional music, food, and information. And Abbott is exploring the tutoring process with peers. At River City, this one I'm going to know a little bit more about. So we're currently in Spirit Week. Our days have been fuzzy socks, PJs, winter attire versus like hot weather attire, flannel day, and class color. It's been going well for us. We also had a poster drop. So that's an annual thing we've been incorporating more. We announced the Homecoming Court and the nominees by dropping a poster garners a huge crowd. It's turning into a very big crowd pleaser. Had a lot of fun right now. And then also, like I have said, we have our rally tomorrow. If any of you would like to come, it starts at 2:55. Our theme is Winter Wonderland. Should be a lot of fun. We got some games. We got performances by Cheer, Majorette, Command, and Drumline. It's going to be a lot of fun. We have our game tomorrow night, too. Varsity's at 7:00. We're playing McClatchy, who we consider our rivals, so we really want to beat them. And then our dance on Saturday at 10:00, or 7:00 to 10:00. So should be a lot of fun. Yeah, we're very excited. Thank you, guys. Oh, and then we, forgot about this. We had our grade level assemblies to recognize everyone who got like a 3.5 GPA or higher. So it's a lot of fun. Thank you, guys.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. So you are welcome to stay if you would like to. And this evening, two of our information discussion items, although you can obviously give input on all, but we're going to be talking about our progress report with our strategic plan that you might want to give input on, and also our expanded learning opportunities too. So just as a heads up, but if you need to go and, okay, good. We're happy to have you. And I hope you have a great homecoming. So that takes us to CSEA, and we have CSEA President Daniel Gandara.
Good evening, Superintendent Hildreth, Board President Kirby Gonzalez, trustees and cabinet. Have a short update for you guys this evening. We had a meeting this past Tuesday to discuss the changing guidelines in COVID-19's non-emergency regulations. I'd first like to thank Anu Moni, Carrie's hair, Jenna and Christina for meeting with the CSEA. CSA will be presenting to the district tomorrow an MOU, which we feel will provide safety to all students and staff in regards to COVID. When discussing the possibility of negotiating agreement on Tuesday, the district's response was a no. And all I ask from this board is to give guidance and at least less meat, allow us to give a proposal. We feel the proposal is a fair proposal to the district. And then my last thing is, Stan, I want to thank you for collaborating with me and meeting with me all these years. And good luck at YCOE. As CSEA Regional Rep, I oversee YCOE. So be good to my classified because they'll call me. You guys have a good evening. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That takes us to WSTA report, and President Dugne.
Good evening, trustees, Superintendent Hildreth, President Kirby Gonzalez. I, before I do anything tonight, I'm going to actually start out by talking to our outgoing Assistant Superintendent of Ed Services, Stan. I'm sorry. I know at times I have made your life challenging. But I can honestly say, there's not a more genuine person that I could have worked with than Stan Moisich. An honest, caring person who is just enjoyable to be around. Like, I would have much rather been drinking a beer with you than talking about the stuff we had to talk about. But I wish you the best. And I just, I do want to tell you that I find you just to be a person of incredible character. And I wish you luck in your newest endeavors. I did want to talk very briefly about something that President Gandara brought up, which is, and we haven't brought it to Ed, or to HR yet, but I think we need to recognize the new normal that is COVID-19. And I think we need to consider the world before COVID and the world after COVID. In the world before COVID, we had negotiated sick leave that made sense for our days. In the world after COVID, where anticipating teachers maybe need to be gone for 10 or more days every year, our sick leave no longer matches with the reality on the ground. And I think it's time to come to the table and discuss this new normal. If we're asking teachers not to come to work sick, if we're asking teachers to protect each other and students, then in this new normal, the previously negotiated sick leave, there's an impact. The previously negotiated sick leave is no longer appropriate. And so I just wanted to back Mr. Gandara up on that. Gosh, I really wanted to come to this board meeting without pissing anybody off, because it seems like that is my new normal. And that's not my intent. And I really thought I was going to. But have you ever talked to a person who, as you're talking to them, you're realizing they're just waiting for you to finish, and they're not actually listening to what you say? So I'm coming to find this is my experience coming before the board. I want to remind this board that I do not have a six-figure salary. I do not have unlimited time to represent my members when I I do not have unlimited time to represent my members when I come before you. I work a job where I'm educating the students of West Sacramento, and I care very much about it. And some of you can probably attest to the fact that I care about my job and I do my best at it. It has come to my attention that members of the board feel like perhaps I wax on a little bit too long. And you know what? I have even mentioned it at board meetings, and I know that I go along a long time. But I want to remind you that in the absence of being able to meet you in closed session, like my partners in WUSD, of being able to be addressed on my comments, like reports presented by WUSD, I have a very limited amount of time to tell you about the conditions for teachers and students in West Sacramento. This is my time. And I am very sorry if it feels like it runs too long. And perhaps I might be able to shorten this time that I speak to you if even one of you would follow up on a Friday after a Thursday and ask me about my comments. But in the three years I have been president, I haven't had one board member follow up with my comments. So my teachers do not feel represented by the School Board of West Sacramento. And to be perfectly frank, we are community partners. So as you go into the next closed session and you listen to WSD talk about their priorities and goals, I want you to consider the fact that there are people that are not in there with you. And that's the teachers. And they are the connection to the students who can tell you about every single one. Now, I am angry because I've had this conversation all week. I've been attacked for two weeks since the last board meeting, and I've gone to my members and asked what they want me to do, and they want me to speak to you like this. If you want to hear about teachers and you want me to shorten my comments, then follow up with me and find out why I'm saying what I'm saying. That's it. You are elected members on behalf of students and teachers in West Sacramento. Follow up. And if I'm going too long, I'll probably cut it a little shorter. And let me follow up with this. You could probably cut 20 minutes off your board meeting by cutting out some of the toxic positivity and backslapping that you do at this board meeting. Now, I want to acknowledge there's one person in the room, Virginia Coffey, that hasn't been a part of this. And Virginia, actually, in a short time, has reached out to me. And there's a couple of board members up there that have reached out to me on behalf of my members as well. But it has been a soul-sucking two weeks. Again, I do this job in addition to the other job I do, which is teaching the students in this city. There is no big salary for this, and I do this on behalf of my teachers. For my last comment, and I'm sorry, I'm fired up because it's been a tough couple of weeks for me to sleep. I want to thank the board for my last comment, for hearing me tonight in anticipation of potential change to this. I've said this once before, and I'll say it again. We are one of your community partners. I can reach out to you. I can do my best to reach out to you, but it's your responsibility to reach out to us as well and find out what's going on with teachers and students. You are elected officials. I ask you to do so. My members would appreciate it. Thank you very much.
That takes us into our public comments, and I do have a public comment disclaimer that I need to read. Members of the public may address the board on topics of the board agenda during every meeting. In addition, during regular meetings, the public may also address any topic within the jurisdiction of the board. Please know that the board is listening to your comments, but by law cannot meaningfully respond in this forum to items not on the agenda. The board may limit the total time for public input on any topic to 20 minutes unless it waives the agenda item. Individual speakers may be limited to three minutes to comment on any topic. The board respects the right of members of the public to speak regarding matters within its jurisdiction. However, please recognize that comments regarding students other than the speaker's own children made during a public board meeting may be a violation of students' right to privacy, unless the speaker may be legally liable. If you reference a student's name other than your own student, you may be deemed out of order. Furthermore, it's important for the public to understand that negative or derogatory comments made against district employees or others, even those made in a public board meeting, may be actionable civil defamation. Although the board may not prohibit such comments, board policy allows the public to lodge complaints against district employees, providing more opportunity to be heard than is allowed under the open meeting law that governs this meeting. Okay, that takes us to our general public comments, and I have our first public comment is Maria Elena Sepulveda.
Good evening. I've been asked to come here several times as part of my advocacy group, by the disorganized community. I'm a product of Washington Unified School District, so I've been very hesitant to do so. I'm going to get to what I actually came here to speak on, but I got to support these people because they're not the only ones asking for extended sick leaves. This is going from elementary to higher ed and academia, so I suggest y'all listen to them. Why I didn't come is because what this man spoke to, teachers. Teachers made such a big difference in my life. I experienced a lot of disproportionality growing up, and the services that I received from the teachers in Washington Unified is who made me into the advocate I am today. That said, let me go into what I'm actually here for. So first, I want to point out the good things that I saw tonight. Your land acknowledgement is awesome. The fact that you have your promises and your LCAP on your board agenda is beautiful. I go to so many districts in Sacramento, and I don't see that. The reason I'm here, however, oh, and the students with disability success, sorry, that's huge. But the reason why I'm here is because I've been contacted by your native community, and I saw some problems. So when I go to your Indian Ed program, you have the website listed as Title VII. That is not the title under the Department of Education for the United States that oversees Indian education. So that's actually Impact Aid, which has to do with money for people who have like served in the military and things like that. You guys need to have that listed under Title VI. Your Indian Ed programming, your parents have informed me that they got one field trip to a statue unveiling. They got an email the day of, and were told, that's your permission slip, just reply yes. And they were even allowed to drop off children that weren't theirs. You're not giving out 506 forms. That's how you get your funding for Indian Ed. So the big thing was services to native students. So I see that of the 32 native students you served in 2022, 46.9% had chronic absenteeism. So if you all have a Native Ed program and you're not sending out 506 forms, you don't have a community liaison that can engage that public. Some of those absences could be from cultural events like deaths. Funerals take us a little longer than they do a day for other communities. 506 forms, again, you have students who are behind. Lots of students are behind from COVID, but if you've got those 506 forms in, you would have the funding available. I'm available. I've left my information. Please feel free to reach out. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you for that information. All right. And that takes us to Nikiba Gregory.
All right, so I only have three minutes. I'm going to have to try to go fast. My number one thing that I want to talk to you about is the non-relects that are happening this year. During a teacher shortage, for us to have non-relects when we have invested in these teachers, does it make a lot of sense to me? We should take that time and work with those teachers and help them to be better. I know for a fact a few teachers that were non-relected did not get all of the support that they needed. They were promised support, but they didn't get it. So for us to non-reelect somebody or for one principal to decide for the whole district that that person doesn't fit us, I don't think that that's a good use of our money. We should use that money to reinvest in our teachers and spend more time in finding out exactly what they need. Because you're not asking what they need, you're just assuming that you know what they need. The other thing is the sub shortage. We have a terrible sub shortage, and teachers are really stressed out. At this point right now, people are just barely hanging on, and we need to up that sub pay, we need to do some recruitment, and we need to train our subs. Our subs are not trained. They go into that classroom not understanding that our kids are the worst behaved than they've ever been because of COVID and whatever issues. They're the worst that they've ever been in the 23 years that I've taught in this district. And we need to have the support on that. Secondly, thirdly, I'm also disappointed to see that leadership walked out on a West Act teacher's report. We have never walked out on one of your guys' reports, and for you guys to have any leadership that would do that to Doug is wrong. I mean, the guy works tirelessly. He does not get release. He does not get the pay that he deserves. And for him to be doing this kind of work and trying to fit in all of our needs and to express to you guys what we need, and for somebody to walk out, that is wrong. I'm going to tell you honestly, testing and awards do not motivate our students. Having them sit there and watch the same kids year after year after year get the same awards, they are not motivated. They are not happy about it. So why don't we focus on the love of learning and getting guest speakers in there and people that would motivate the kids and get them energized about it instead of doing testing and awards that are meaningless? If you want to do those awards, do it after school when the parents of those kids are the ones that are going to be there. Thank you.
Thank you. And that takes us to Maria Garcia.
Hola, buenas tardes. Gracias por todo, la oportunidad de hablar. Como representante del Comité de Padres de Familia de todo el distrito de Washington Unified, me presento. Mi nombre es Maria Garcia. Estoy aquí por la razón apoyando a los maestros. Es cierto, los maestros están trabajando con un muy corto personal dentro de las escuelas y no es justo, no es justo lo que está pasando. Pero no solamente los maestros, también está el personal fuera de las escuelas. Hay muchos niños que están pasando por muchas crisis diferentes dentro de las escuelas y no es ahora solamente. Esto ya ha sido por más de tres años, igual que ellos hemos estado hablando también de lo mismo que está pasando. No es justo para ninguno de los niños. Hay cada vez más peleas, más, I don't know, I don't know if it's in English, cuando están siendo los niños, I forgot the name. Ya, los niños siguen teniendo muchos problemas dentro de las escuelas, peleas, y están siendo atacados por diferentes personas, diferentes otros niños, y no es justo para nadie.
So this is Ms. Maria Garcia. She's here representing the Comité de Padres. She's here also in support of our teachers. She agrees that we are extremely short-staffed, and it's unfair to our students. And it's not just teachers that we're short-staffed on, it's also support staff. Kids, especially for the past three years, have been going through a lot of crises, and it's the same topic over and over, that we need additional staffing and additional support. There have been increases in fights and in students being attacked, and it's just unfair for our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Maria, do we have any other in-person public comments?
No other in-person comment requests received. There was just one pre-submitted. I don't know.
Okay, and we're still, I think, at our time with those. So based on our past practice, I will read this public comment. So this comes from Nicole Goodrich, and it is a general public comment. And will you time me? I think it'll be fine and under, but just thinking. Dear Board of Directors, this month an incident occurred at Stonegate Elementary. Per my eighth grader, a student was found unresponsive on the asphalt. EMS was activated and the child was transported, I assumed, to a local emergency room. As a registered nurse who cares for children, this event prompted questions about the school's procedures and training. Per the American Heart Association, when a children is found down, the responder should check for responsiveness, call for help nearby, and then activate EMS immediately. I am not sure how long it took for EMS to be activated in the situation at Stonegate, but clearly it was the correct action. As a parent, I would like to know what process is for any staff to activate EMS. Are children allowed to call? The safety of my child and all children are the utmost importance. One child dies every five days as a result of choking. Are the staff at school trained in how to help a child who is choking? Another concern is sudden cardiac arrest, SCA. It is the number one cause of death on a school campus of young athletes. Over 2,000 children and teens die from SCA every year in the U.S. Survival depends on how quickly and efficiently CPR was initiated and the use of an automatic external defibrillator. Do all staff, including cafeteria workers, yard duties, secretary, librarians, teachers, aides, health aides, vice principals, and principals trained in CPR certified? Do they complete mandatory annual training? Are there AEDs on every campus? And are all staff trained on usage? We send our kids to school assuming they are safe and in environment, and this incident raised many questions about the safety of my child while on campus. If my child or any child were to have an emergency, I would hope that all school staff would be adequately trained in CPR so they could possibly save the life of my child or another. I'd like the board to please answer the above questions. Nicole Goodrich, RN. ECC RN. Okay, and thank you. And can we have follow-up to that from, we have her contact. Okay. So that takes us now to our public hearing. It's been a while since we've done a public hearing here. So I need to open this public hearing for the High School Foreign Language Adoption, Carnegie. Sam Moisich, Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services, and Matt Ainsworth, Director of Curriculum Instruction and Professional Learning.
Thank you. So in the summer of 2022, the WSD River City World Language Teachers began a process to choose a new world language curriculum adoption. The process included reviewing possible choices of piloting equipment and participating in professional learning during the fall semester of the 22-23 school year. On February 2nd, 2023, the Curriculum Council chose to move forward with the recommendation of our grades nine through 12 world language teachers and move forward with Carnegie Learning Language Solutions as our world language curriculum adoption, beginning for the spring of 22-23, for a total of six years. Carnegie Learning Solutions is aligned with California State's world language standards and combines its digital hands-on materials with embedded assessments and a vast array of resources to meet all the world language standards. And so that is what our teachers and staff at River City High School would like us to do. Matt Ainsworth has been involved with that process. I don't know if he has anything technically to add, but he's here to answer any technical questions you may have.
Then I will open this public hearing. Do we have any comments?
No public comments.
Okay, any comments from the board? Okay, then we will close this public hearing officially.
Thank you.
All right. Been a long time. And that takes us to information discussion items. And so this is our mid-year progress report on the strategic plan with performance fact, and that is Dr. Cheryl Hildreth, our superintendent.
Good evening, trustees. It's my pleasure. This evening, I am going to share with you update on what we have accomplished throughout the district in relation to our strategic plan. We are thankful to our Board of Trustees for approving the strategic plan back on June 23rd of 2022. And the focus is, again, how are we going to meet the needs of our students? We've aligned it to our LCAP, and we wanted to take the opportunity this evening to give you an overview of what we've done since the fall semester. So now I'm going to put on a different hat, and I'm going to go down and present. Okay, so want to use this opportunity to share just a little bit of an overview of the strategic plan, knowing that Clerk Coffey was not a member of the board in June when we adopted. was not a member of the board in June when we adopted it. And just to give a highlight and wanted to start if we could with where you can find the strategic plan on our website. Because what I'm going to present this evening with the team is just highlights of what we're doing. But want to make sure if we have any members of the community who want to take a deeper dive, they know where to find it. So if you are to go on our district page and then you scroll down and you see strategic plan is listed there, you click and that will take you to a visual of our strategic plan. It's about 48 pages. And it really was for me a highlight of the work we do here in Washington Unified. Because we took about seven months, starting in November of 2021. And we met with staff, certificated, classified. We met with parents. We met with students of all age and grade levels, starting with our third graders through 12th. And we had our community and business partners as well. So just scrolling through so people who are not familiar with the plan can see what is in it. And tonight, we're going to just give you a highlight and overview. So Mario, let's go to the presentation. And want to start that really the intent this evening is to highlight what has our focus been for 2223? And it's been about coherence, next slide. It's been about coherence, which is how do we bring all the things we said we wanted to do in the strategic plan? Where do we start? So as a reminder, our strategic plan is a five-year plan. And I remind staff and everyone that I talk to that we have these goals, but we know that you have to be intentional and you have to focus. And so that starts with year one of how are we going to implement this plan? And so tonight, that is what we want to show you, how we've started implementing for the 2223 school year. So I want to give you an overview of our strategic plan in brief. What we call our roadmap for disciplined implementation, what that looks like. To spotlight the work that our schools have been doing and all of our district and divisions and departments. Some examples of what we've been doing to support teaching and learning and leading for everyone and how we're going to move forward with continuous improvement. Next slide. So want to start with what is our promise? Our promise is about equity, excellence, and empowerment for every student, every day. That we really think about equity in the lens of our work is for every single student that we have in the district. When we talk about equity, we're saying we know everyone has needs, but we want to look at our data to determine who's going to, who are we going to support first? Knowing that we're supporting everyone, but we're just trying to prioritize who we're going to support first. Excellence is the goal. We want our students to leave here being excellent scholars and excellent in terms of their social and emotional health. And we want empowerment. We want everyone to believe and feel that their voice is important and what they have to say, whether that be our students, whether that be our certificated staff, classified management. Everyone's voice is important and we are creating a system where we want to make sure people know that and that they feel they have opportunities to share their views. We want to do that for every student, every day, but we also want to make sure our staff knows that we want to hear their voice as well. Next slide. And so when we think about the strategic plan, we've kind of chunked it in some areas. So if you think about what's our promise, that's our portrait of a graduate, which I'll show in a future slide. These are the characteristics that we want our students to leave with. Our goals and measures is what are we, the adults in the system, going to do? So that those characteristics of a graduate are the things that our students leave with? We're going to do that by focusing on professional practices. What kind of PD do we need? And then be very strategic in how we're getting support so that we're bringing in all aspects of our community, not just our aspects of people who are in schools, but knowing it's the people who are not in the schools, but their work supports what happens in the schools and making sure our community is involved as well. Next slide. So this is what we call our one-pager. It shows these are the main components of our strategic plan. At the top, you have our promise. And then to the left, you have the portrait of a graduate. To the right, these are the four areas that we think if we focus in these areas, we will provide the support our students need. And then at the bottom, those are the five goals that we are focused on in supporting our students. Next slide. Hopefully this looks familiar to everyone. We have incorporated this year, making sure that every single presentation that we prepare is aligned to our strategic plan. So we ask whoever is presenting to highlight which goal is what we're doing. Because when we come to the board, especially if we're asking you to take action, we want to make sure that we first have thought, how is this going to move us closer to our goal? If we're asking for resources to be dedicated, how is that moving us to our goals? If we're asking for you to approve a curriculum, how is that aligned to our goals? So having this alignment helps us think about our goals. It helps us think about our equity principles. And these are the, really the equity statement that the board worked to develop together last year that lets us know our priorities are healthy relationships with all. Our priorities are access and opportunity for all. Our priorities are ensuring that all of our students, staff, and families feel valued. Everyone feels accepted, supported. And lastly, that disproportionality, removing that predictability of success based on how you look, where you live. That was the direction that you all gave to me. And that is what the strategic plan is with the team here, is how are we going to make that happen? So when we get to our four pillars, it's teaching and learning. How are we thinking about that through an equity lens? Like which students need that intentional support right now? When we go to pillar B, we can't do it alone. We need support from our families and we need support from our community partners. We know that that means we need to provide learning opportunities for everyone to make sure that they have the highest quality of knowledge so that they can provide the highest quality of instruction. And then lastly, if our, what we do is not safe and our parents and our staff and our students don't feel that they're in a safe environment, we're not going to get to the instruction. So if we focus on these areas, then we believe we can meet the goals and metrics of our plan. Next slide. So reminding everyone, our portrait of a graduate, we took a lot of time on this part and it really is highlighting what are the characteristics that when you leave Washington Unified, we'll be able to say, yes, that's a Washington Unified student. And so making sure our students are people of character and integrity, that they are healthy and they're able to advocate for their own wellness, that they're effective in their communication skills, they know the importance of collaboration. They are critical thinkers and that's so important to today's society, that you have to be able to think creatively and think critically. That they're empathetic, that they're ethical, that they are thinking about the world around them and outside of West Sack. And then that they understand that learning is a lifelong endeavor. It's something that you want to, it never ends, even when you graduate. And then inside the circle are some samples of what that would look like. So when we think of a portrait of a graduate, this shows you the areas that we're talking about. Next slide. So let's get to the roadmap of what we've done for the fall semester. So from August to December with our strategic plan, what have we accomplished? So we want to start with, when you're doing a strategic plan, you want to think about every three to five years, you're updating your plan because new things you've discovered, you've made some learnings, and you want to pivot. So we did step one by creating a new strategic plan because when I joined the district, we were right at the end of the previous strategic plan. So I understand that this is not a new system for Washington Unified. It is something that the trustees, the staff, the families and communities have valued, that we want to see what is it that we're working towards. And so we started the year by creating coherence. And so I'm going to ask our Assistant Superintendent of Ed Services to start and share with you what has happened on the school level.
Thank you. So we'll start off with what happens every week. So as Superintendent Hildreth mentioned, not everything is new. Or many of these systems we've had previously, but the way you do them and the focus is definitely with more intentionality and that part is new to us this year. So for example, we have had every week teacher collaboration for a few years. For us, that time is on Wednesdays. That time is set aside for our staff to work together to monitor instruction and collaborate with one another and make plans, appropriate plans. However, we've this year reinvested into that process. So we took a large number of our staff, admin, and teachers to work on how to better implement professional learning communities. And that's something we're going to continue to invest with. And that is something that community takes part every Wednesday for every week. In addition, for every month, we are working with Nicole Anderson and her team in developing our leadership at our school sites. And so all our principals have coaches to help analyze and monitor the systems of equity. That's the lens that they're having their discussions in their coaching meetings about. It's all about that lens of equity. And how do our systems affect equity at our school sites? And you know, are there ways to improve upon those? In addition, we've begun work this year with the National Center of Urban School Transformation, NCUST. And they have been visiting our sites, doing walkthroughs with our principals, trying to work with the schools to build the leadership capacity and lift the expectations for what happens actually in the classroom for all students. In addition, this year, we've started a principals professional learning community, which is something that we do twice a month to actually look at data, work together, reflect on our action plans to see what might need to be adjusted. And all these processes that I just described to you, that I mentioned for every month, all those are actually, those are new practices this year. Those practices were not implemented the previous three years while I've been at the district office. So that focus and intentionality is new this year. In addition, as you pointed out from last dashboard meeting, you saw that we are trying to keep a look at those metrics on a quarterly basis. So we're able to see not just at the end of the year where those metrics may wind up, but we're looking to see where they are currently as much as possible so that our leaders can work with their staff to further decide what changes may need to be made or what adjustments may need to be on the road. So that is the continued work and that is, of course, is also a newer practice. It sounds like something that's very obvious, but it is not. And it's something that we'll keep working to get better at. And those are just some of the things that I believe that the strategic plan has helped us become more focused with.
As part of this, you'll see at the top where it says school level annual action plans and district level priorities. That's something that we are very, very proud of because this is the first time in our district that we have asked everyone to create some strategic focused plans on how we're going to support students and what that looks like. And so I want to give you an example of what those plans look like. First, starting with our school plans and highlighting our goals. Next slide. On our one-pager document that was shown a couple of slides before, we have these five goals. And you'll notice that each goal has at least three metrics of how we're going to measure if we meet the goal. And again, when we presented this to our administrators and we've presented it to our staff who support schools, we recognize that all of these things need to be done. But we also recognize in a five-year plan, you need to determine what's going to go first. So if you go to the next slide, this highlights of those goals, these are the year one goals. So for 2223, we met with our admin team, district staff in July and August to say of all of these goals, which ones do we want to start with this year? And this was what was decided. So with our goal two, the whole child, it really is that focus on safety, belonging, academic, and timely supports. And we really meshed those with goal four, access to supports for emotional, behavioral, mental, and physical health. Because this is what we see the students need in terms of what do they need for their mental development coming off of our pandemic experience? This is why our team said this is what we're going to start with for this year. In terms of goal three, opportunity and achievement for every student, this is the work. Are we achieving and meeting those proficiency standards in ELA and in math? And as you saw at our last meeting, that's why we're using iReady so that we have some formative data because we know right now CASP, our Smarter Balance Testing, is at the end of the year. And we want to know what supports our students need prior to the end of the year. For our high school, goal five is looking at our ninth and 10th graders and making sure that they are on track to graduate. We find that a lot of times for our students and even our families, you don't really start thinking of what's after high school until 11th and 12th grade. That really is too late. You need to start focusing, really, college starts at kindergarten in my head. But in terms of making sure that students know what they need, if that is their goal to go to college, we want them to know what they need to do to be successful in ninth and 10th grade. Next slide. And the next. So this is an example. So based on those goals, each school was asked to look at their data, use their single school plans for a student achievement that they developed with their school sites at the end of last year. And they took each goal that's highlighted and they created a three-step plan. So we're using Westmore Oaks Action Plan as an example. But again, I'm just highlighting that every school has the same format, using these same goals. So you see that for Westmore Oaks, they took whole child goal number two. And then they said, what is the data telling us? So they're looking at their past survey from last year. They highlighted the metrics of what their students were saying. And then they decided, what do we need to do? So if you go to the next slide, step two is what they need to do. What are some instructional practices that they need to do? What type of PD will help them achieve that goal? And then step three is about who's going to do it? What is it that needs to be done? Who's going to do it? What's the due date? Who's the lead? It's usually a team effort, but who's going to keep us on track? And then who else is a team member? And so as Stan talked about in those cycles, these are the conversations then we're having with our principals. This helps us know what PD we need. And by using the evaluations, are we making progress? Next slide. We also then condensed this into what we are calling our School Vital Signs Scorecard, where you see each goal is listed. And then this is where the school sites are putting in data for them to use to see, how am I, what's the data telling me? And so we wanted to show an example. This is Stonegate Scorecard, but every school has a scorecard. So we're just using these two schools as examples to show you what every school has done. In terms of goal two, those feelings of sense of belonging, we're getting... In terms of goal two, those feelings of sense of belonging, we're getting that data from the past survey. And Dr. Burns in previous presentations has given information about our past survey, the types of questions. We break it down by grade levels and the schools have much more detailed data that they can look at. And then our goal three, this is data that the schools get from iReady that they put in here and it helps us to track progress. And really the intent is with progress monitoring, if you need to pivot and do something different, you know that you need to do it before the end of the year. So this is really the point of having a scorecard and the schools will start getting, adding information three times a year so that we have ongoing information. Next slide. Our strategy map again is the areas where people who are not necessarily at schools support schools. So again, pillar A is about the teaching and learning practices. Pillar B is what would our community partnerships look like? Pillar C gives examples of learning opportunities for all, all staff, all employees. And then pillar D is about safety. You see, just like our goals for students, we have three descriptors of what that would look like for those who support outside of a actual school setting. So if we go to the next slide, we've asked our divisions to do the same thing that our schools have done in selecting one area from each pillar to say, how do we use this to focus on supporting students? And so if you look at pillar A, all of our divisions are thinking about how are we going to get feedback about how our work is impacting students? So we are in the process of developing surveys for our students and their families about the things that we do. And to highlight that, next slide, I'm going to ask our Assistant Superintendent of Business Services, Monique Stavall, to come and give you an example of a plan that's from one of our divisions that's not a school site.
Thank you and good evening. As Dr. Hildreth shared, these are annual plans for our non-school-based team members. It's important when we're thinking about the implementation and the success of a strategic plan to remind ourselves that all of our team members, from our teachers to our custodians, are part of the academic success for all of our students. And so when we were looking at our district office or, or non-school-based annual plans, we wanted to make sure that we were aligning ourselves with what our school-based partners were doing. And with the annual plans, there were three major steps. As you can see, getting it done in one, two, three steps. We first identified the major project. We defined the sub-projects and then we had detailed milestones to, and alignment of our resources. Next slide. We're highlighting our, a sample of our food services plan and we're very lucky to have our food service director here to be able to, I guess, represent the work that she and her team has done. As Dr. Hildreth shared, we focus on the pillars and a part of the pillars, we're working on surveys so that we can get feedback from the people we're serving so we can meet their needs. In step one, we selected our key action, which is to create opportunities for student voice and ownership. In step two, we defined the department-specific priorities for that particular action. As you see in red, one of the main priorities is to collaborate with departments to survey students. And that's a collaboration that we'll be doing with the other partners within our district. And then step three is to identify the milestones of, of progress. Here you have just a, a sample of what Carrie Pina has, has determined that within her team she wants to do, such as developing meaningful questions for surveys and feedback to collect data and review data along with due date and whom she's going to be partnering with. So this is just an example of what we've done at a district level for our annual plan.
Thank you. And looking at this, this is, has been a great learning experience for all of our team members to understand in a different way why every job in our district is important. And the goal is for our students to know that we know that every job in our district is important because everyone here is to serve our students. So if you look at this example, we always hear from students, and I'm sure those of you who are parents or have family members, they always will give you an opinion about their choice of food and what we could do better. So why don't we just take that and highlight it though? Like ask them with a survey and then when they can see that changes have been made, that's when they begin to feel like, oh, somebody does see me. Oh, my voice is valued. Oh, I am empowered because somebody is doing something. So it's just been exciting to know that we have plans for food services. We have plans for fiscal and payroll and helping people understand that payroll doesn't affect necessarily our students, but it affects our staff. So the importance of our staff of getting paid on time is going to help them have a positive attitude at work. So all, everybody's job is important. And, and the experience of aligning our work, our goals, and then the conversations have really been what is a new process in Washington Unified. Next slide. So just in this first semester, what has happened as we think about supporting our, our students through staff actions is we've had our weekly PLCs. Again, we've had data chats at schools, looking at a variety of types of data, things that have happened, things that are going to happen, like our California Healthy Kids Survey, which will be coming up. Just increased observations. Observations at every level are important and trying to get in the system that an observation is really growth. It is not an opportunity for got you. Observation is about what is going well and being able to replicate that with others. Having that PD for our teachers, which we started in October, we built on that in January by adding our classified staff. And we're, we're so thankful for our CSEA partners and WSTA in, in working with us to say, PD is important for everyone. And the feedback and of, of just people feeling valued lets us know that we're on the right track. Meeting with our, our families, I have an advisory council and I've met with those parents. I meet with the high school students at each of our three schools, but also our principals and our admin team. They engage with families by having coffee with the principal, getting that feedback that they share with us or just conversations that they share with us. And then again, looking at what's happening in our classroom. NCUST works with districts across the country and highlights best practices that are working specifically for student populations that may have opportunity and achievement gaps. And so they have done the research of saying, these are practices we've seen that literally work for all students. And when we say all students, it means if we're looking at data, everyone is achieving. There is no gap. So their knowledge and working with us and our schools has been very meaningful. Next slide. So as our path forward, now we're into second semester of year one. It is making sure like the scorecard that we have for our schools, that we develop one for our departments to be able to get that ongoing feedback. So we'll be doing that by creating student and family, community partner feedback surveys. We're looking at how we write our questions because we don't want to overload people and they have this survey, surveys, and then it's not meaningful. So we really want to take time in how we craft those questions so that people know we value their time and their opinion. We're going to continue having targeted professional learning for our certificated and classified staff based on data and based on interest and based on need of what people feel will be helpful for them to, to progress in doing their jobs even better. And then working with our leaders, it's always, one of the characteristics of the portrait of a graduate is a lifelong learner. We want to make sure even that our leaders as well have the opportunity to grow and build their capacity. So everyone is having that opportunity to learn and grow. Next slide. So that takes us back. This is what we're trying to do. We're trying to make sure we have equity, excellence and empowerment for every student every day. And this is our how. That's our promise that we remain focused on having the characteristics of a portrait of a graduate. We promise that we will stay focused on our goals and progress monitor and pivot when needed, that if something's not working, we don't want to be in it for five years and then realize that didn't work. So really this is aligning in ways of how we're going to evaluate the work that we're doing and the support that we're providing for students and all of our staff. We'll be focusing on what professional practices look like at all levels and having those conversations of if I am a professional, what does that mean? And coming to some consensus on what that means so that we're all kind of growing in the same direction with the same level of understanding? And then focusing on those strategies and those four pillars as ways to get us there. Next slide. And that really is our, our overview. I do want to acknowledge that we have our performance fact partner in the room, Muti Fagbayi, who has been right with us and giving us the support and tools that we need. And Muti, you want to say just something briefly? And then we're going to be ready for any questions that you might have.
Nice to see you all. I just want to really, I can't commend enough the superintendent and our team. I think I mentioned in a previous meeting with you, about two-thirds of districts we work with across the country follow through on their plan, which is why you don't get the results. And what we have so far with Washington USD is a real commitment by this superintendent and our team to implement. And doing that alone, it's a virtual guarantee that things are going to get better. You know, we, first you plan the work, then you have to work the plan. And that's what's taking place right now. I also want to really highlight one thing I haven't seen, you know, ever really is the work, the way the structure of the implementation at the department level is taking place. This is the first school system we've worked with where the entire organization chose the same four key actions and every department in the district is working on those key actions. And I think that's a much more refined approach than I've seen in the last 20 years. So I'm very optimistic about what could come out of this. We're not there yet. You know, we don't have the data yet, but just the fact that we've committed to being disciplined about implementation is going to yield better results. So it's a real pleasure for us, a real honor, quite a privilege to continue to partner with the district. Thank you.
All right, we will open it up if you have any questions.
Yes, thank you. Okay, I think first, I'm trying to see if this is a public comment or if I'm reading this correctly, if we have a public comment for this.
It's on the next informational item.
Okay, not on this one. No public comment. Okay, so we have no public comments, so it's board comments. All right, take it away. Tracy Pasati.
Okay, so thank you, Superintendent. This is a great presentation. I pretty much had most of my questions asked and answered during our meetings earlier this week. The only, there's only a couple of questions that I have that just popped up as it triggered while watching or looking through the slideshow. And that was, is the past survey given once or twice a year? Twice, okay. That was a good question. Thank you, Stan. Yeah, that seems to make sense. So you can, more data points helps to inform. So thank you, that's helpful. And then in terms of the department-level scorecard, we're breaking down, say, are we talking about MOT, one department, and then Ed Services, another department, and then Special Services, another department? Okay, is there a scorecard for administration as a whole? From site level to district office to, you know, that, that I think staff would, I guess, participate in, in, in helping us gauge our own selves and things we could work on?
So there is what we'll be doing in year two, where we're looking at what are the practices for, for teachers? What are the practices for admin? And what are the practices for district staff that we each want to focus on? And then we'll be thinking of, okay, if this is what we want to know, how are we going to measure that? So that is the work that we will be looking for, for year two.
That's in, okay. So this, we're focusing based on more in the classroom, more direct.
Yes, yes. So the, the feedback will be for admin, I think Stan, if we think about some of those conversations we had at Admin Advance is, am I getting into classrooms and giving, is the feedback that I'm providing helpful? Think, things like that, that will give the administrators feedback, which is what it's about, that am I supporting my teachers in the way that's helpful?
Perfect, thank you. That's exactly what I want to hear.
All right, thank you for that presentation. Just, just a thought or a question that came to mind, other than surveying the students, right? This is who we're serving. Other than, than surveying them, looking at the data, then coming together and coming up with different ways, are they, is there any platform or pathway to allow the students to be part of the creative thinking or solution, right? So I'm looking at the whole child, which I love, but being an effective collaborator, being a creative thinker, thinking globally, is there any practices that you can speak about where not only do they, is their voice being heard through a survey, but also through the actual creative process to, 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 to implement action on their behalf?
Yes, so with the, for an example, the high school advisory groups that I have, I have one at River City, Yolo and Washington Middle College. So I'm meeting with a high school group every month, just a different place. But for example, the first question when I went to each group was the portrait of a graduate, making sure they understood that. Asking them, for example, which one of the characteristics do you think that's the one that is really important to us and why? And so it was interesting, the commonalities across all three schools was the empathetic, ethical, global citizen. And they focused on that piece about acts with respect, compassion, grace and cultural humility. And then that went into what they felt they needed. So to get that, what isn't happening at your school and what would it look like? So getting that level of feedback does happen through conversations because you're right. A survey is going to give you info, but when you have more anecdotal information, that's, you're going to get a nuance that doesn't come out up in a survey. What we want to think about for year two is how do we get the voice of our middle school students? And again, our, our three to five students, students in grades three through five, even our little ones have info to share. So we're thinking about how do you ask a question to get an answer in an age-appropriate? And so for example, I was meeting with some students in first and third grade and we phrased the question instead of saying, what do you need? So that's kind of hard for a younger age to get, I don't know, you know, some candy? Like I don't, I don't know what I need. But when we asked, if you were the principal for the day, what would you do? And then it was, you know, I would change the schedule to make more playtime. And then it was, you know, I would change the schedule to make more playtime, I would separate the big kids from the, that's when their minds gave you the answer that you were looking for, but it was always, always about how you ask the question. And so in being intentional in this process, knowing we want that feedback, we want to spend time really crafting good questions, because we don't want question overload. But we really want to make sure that the input and the feedback we're getting is helpful and that who we're asking feels, again, one of our goals is student voice. We want you to know that what you're saying, we're going to do something about it as well.
Thank you, thank you. No, yeah, something that I've, that I've seen across in different practices has been like student panels where our professionals, our teachers, and our parents are invited, and we can kind of just kind of collect all that data and just really, again, not only see their point of view, but also make them part of the equation towards that result. So thank you for that.
Thanks.
And I have a few pieces. And so I think what's really exciting about this is the last strategic plan that we did that is sunset, and now we brought in this, was exciting, it was new for the district, hadn't been done in a while, at least since I had been here in that way, with staff and community input. But then the measures were not there the same way. And so, you know, how are we doing with it? And it kind of, it wasn't so crystal clear. And so I think putting this really at the forefront, we, everyone's on the same page, and it's so great. And so this isn't something that's been developed, and then it, you know, is getting dusty in the corner, or we maybe have it up on the wall, but we walk by it every day and we kind of, you know, just blends in. So I really appreciate that. I think that that, this is what's so special and key, is all of these check-ins now, and that we really are all, everyone's holding themselves accountable. And it was great to hear, thank you for sharing with us, Mutiu, that we're doing this now across our organization. And I, I didn't know that that was unique, and so that's really special to hear. And I commend everyone in this room, Dr. Hildreth, for bringing this across the district to all of our organization. So two questions. One would be, would it be appropriate in this avenue, I hear you, especially since this is new, and this is the first time we've been doing this this year, is at the end to also do some type of staff survey or to somehow get some input from our staff in terms of how they feel it's going as well? Would that be appropriate? And do you think that that could have a place in here as we move into the next phase?
It definitely is appropriate, because for us, it's, it should be a living document. And as you said, not in a binder or living on the website, just to be a checkmark. That is not going to move the work for our students. So I appreciate that suggestion of ways to to be as intentional with staff feedback as we are, for example, of parent feedback and our students. So thank you for that suggestion.
Great, yeah. And then I have one other piece, as you were talking about the data chats that are happening that are so important at the school sites. This week, I've had so many parent comments to me last week, I guess, that maybe it started in then this week in terms of, how is our school ranking, all the rankings, because everything has now come out? And at first, you know, where's this coming from? Well, all the data's come out, and our parents are really craving some of this conversation as well. And I know that you were doing it, we had a presentation on it last board meeting that I've shared with them. But if there's also an opportunity to bring our families actually into some of those data chats or data walks, I think that that would be beneficial. Maybe it looks more like a town hall or something, but I think that there are some ways to really bring them in so that they are seeing it and it's very transparent with them as well.
I think that's a great suggestion in terms of the work we also do with our administrators of making sure families are aware of this and then spending time to get feedback from our, our parents of when, when is the best time or how would you like to receive this information? Because I know all of our school sites have coffee with the principal, would it be better then? Is it better maybe at a PTO meeting? But we know not all schools have a PTO, so it really is taking some time. And that might be a topic I can share with the Parent Advisory Council, is we have all of this information. What's a good way to to get it to you, making sure that it's in a time? And we're very cognizant of making sure it's also in a language that people need to be able to understand and really ask the questions in a way that helps them know that everything we do is to support their children.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, I think we're ready then to move on to the next one.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so that now takes us to our update on the Expanded Learning Opportunities Program, ELOP, and that is Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services, Sam Waisch.
And I don't know why I brought my cellphone up here, really. Okay. So the Expanded Learning Opportunities Program, also known as ELOP, you'll hear that a lot in this presentation, the words ELOP, so that's what it stands for. It provides funding for after-school and summer school enrichment programs for transitional kindergarten through sixth grade. This information item will provide you an update on how Washington Unified is utilizing these new funds through this summer and into the 23, 2023-24 school year. And of course, these funds are giving us a new opportunity, which I think you're going to be very excited about when you hear of some of these new opportunities of growth that we're going to be able to do here in West Sacramento. And tonight, I am joined here by our Expanded Learning Opportunities Program team. And of course, you know Rahale Atabaki, she is the Director of Induction, Early Childhood Learning, as well as Expanded Learning Programs. And she's up here with her new coordinator, Ryan, and they're going to give you a presentation. And so we'll start off with Rahale. She's your girl.
Thank you, Stan. Good evening, everyone. I am pleased and super happy and excited to bring this new item for you guys and talk about Expanded Learning, which is, as you know, very near and dear to my heart for the past few years. So we can go to the next slide. The purpose, so as Stan said, the purpose of this presentation is to inform the board on what is our plans for the Expanded Learning Opportunity Program, or known as ELOP. And also, we wanted to share what is our long-term goals for the, for this grant. As Dr. Hildreth said, we align every, you know, we make sure that all our plans are meeting the strategic plan goals. And honestly, this, when we, when I was reading these, it almost checks all the boxes, like for the pillars, we check two boxes, but it does hit on every pillar. Go ahead, next one. So that's why we, we put the, all the pillars, because there's a little bit of every element when, once we dig into this, this plan. So what is Expanded Learning and Plan? What is it for? Go ahead. So I, we put the definition from the state. State law defines Expanded Learning Programs, or ELOP, as before-school, after-school, summer intercession learning programs that focus on developing the academic, social, emotional, and physical needs and interests of pupils through hands-on engaging learning experiences. Programs should be pupil-centered and results-driven. And I would underline engaging learning experiences, because that's what it's about, hands-on, engaging, fun stuff. Go ahead. The yellow P has prioritization set per CDE, just like our ACES prioritization that was set by the board, it's very similar, foster youth and fit families, unduplicated students and English learners get priorities, and based on availability, we can fill spots for other students too. So what is the purpose of this grant? The purpose is to provide enrichment and engagement for students and a place they could do explorations, and also provide a healthy and safe environment for families where they could have their students be after school. And there's also academic intervention portion to this plan. So, so there's a little bit of everything, there's going to be a lot of fun, as you can, you're going to see, but there's also academic intervention in there built in. So again, Expanded Learning, some summer program is a move away from the remedial summer school towards enrichment and engagement. It's going to offer an opportunity for fun, community building, exploration, learning, that it's kind of different from their regular school day, but it's also complementary to what they're doing in school. And these programs are going to keep the kids not just learning, but offer them opportunities that a lot of them probably won't have on their own. And also give a safe space for children of working families, they will have a place to stay. And these were some extra things that I think it was worth mentioning. The yellow P funds encourages collaboration with community partners and existing publicly-funded programs, such as the ACES program, the YMCA Champions. This is bringing everybody together. We're also having an opportunity to serve younger students. We did traditionally didn't have TK students in the after-school program, and now we're serving TK through six students. And that doesn't mean that we can't have seventh and eighth graders in there. So the grant says TK six, but we actually, if we have availability, we will serve seventh and eighth graders too. It does increase access to more families who need the support, and it's also nine hours of childcare every day. So to get into the plan, I have Ryan here, my coordinator, who is going to tell you all about it.
Thank you. Good evening. Sorry, I'm a little nervous, first time presenting to the board, so I stutter, I apologize. I'm actually really excited about this stuff, expanded learning in particular, especially with the new funding. This is kind of our timeline that we put together, starting at the beginning of this year for 2023. So as you can see, starting in January, it shows that we have done our planning and our outreach for enrichment opportunities. So we made contact with multiple providers in the community to come bring opportunities to the sites that wouldn't normally get there during the regular school day due to funding, due to time constrictions, you know, due to educational minutes. Moving forward in February, we're currently working on a community input and need survey just to figure out what the community does need specifically from the program. And also during this time, we also are, will be putting out an application, application link for families to fill out for our spring intercession camp, which will happen during spring break, April 3rd through the 7th. Moving forward with March, through March, with the partners that we contacted in January, we'll be finalizing contracts, getting to the board for approval, so that way we can set up the schedules and timing for these providers to come in to give the students these opportunities to have that hands-on experiential learning opportunities. And then coming in, sorry, April's where things get really fun, that's where we start sending out the flyers, we start the advertising, we start getting the buzz going for summer, which is going to be kind of our big meat and potatoes for everything, you know, get the registration going for students. Also in April, because of the intervention piece that was mentioned earlier in the slide, we'll be working, contacting teachers to come in and do intervention pieces in the mornings for those students who don't get offered the traditional summer school that happens in some of the schools. And then moving forward to May, we'll move forward to hire the teachers with recommendations through HR. And June 5th, we start our big kickoff with our summer program, which will go from June 5th all the way through June 28th, and which I think is exciting times to get, it provides that care daily for the families who need it all the way up and through pretty much the beginning of the school year. And then in August, as the program ends, we'll get the feedback, and then we will use that as an evaluation to plan for not only the upcoming school year, but also for the upcoming summer, so that way we know what things went well and where we can improve on things to make it even better experience for students and families. Next slide. And then this is coming up from August for 23-24 school year, just the beginning portion. So basically, in August, we are looking to launch Saturday camps as part of the ELOP funds. Again, another opportunity for kids and families to come out and experience what we have to offer for the programs. Beginning in October, we will do enrollment for fall intercession. This is based off of feedback and information that we have received, that families still need that help during those break times. So with the ELOP funds, this will allow us to provide the same nine-hour care for those students on those days that we're off from school. So that'll be, that'll happen in October. And in November, we'll again do the enrollment for winter intercession, being that it's a longer break, same feedback, families needed that support during that two weeks' time. So this ELOP funding allows us to provide those opportunities for those families to have the care, so that way they can do what they need to do during the daytime and know that their students will be in a safe and healthy place for them. And then rolling over into January, we will begin going back to the cycle that we did in the previous slide of start planning for summer, reaching out to providers, so forth, and kind of repeat basically on the feedback that we are taking from August. And then again, moving forward in late February, early March, again, for next school year, we will start enrolling for the spring intercessions, summer programming, and even getting enrollment ready for the upcoming school year. Next slide. So part of our programming, we have already reached out and established school sites. So for spring and summer, we will be running programs at Riverbank Elementary, Stonegate, Bridgeway, and Southport. As you can see, each of the sites have their own provider, so Riverbank will be ran by the city of West Sacramento during the springtime, and Champions during the summertime. Stonegate is offering, doing Champions at both, both those break times. Bridgeway and Southport will be ran by the YMCA for spring intercession and for summer. We did put Elkhorn if needed, that is only for summer, because we are anticipating a large interest in the summer program. So we were going to, we'll be using Elkhorn as our fifth campus to open up for the families. As you can see, we do only list five of the school sites in operation, mainly because Westfield will be under construction. And Westmore, we didn't, wasn't included, but we do want to mention that all these sites will be community sites, so that way any student who's enrolled in Washington Unified School District could apply to go to any of our school sites. So for example, if I had a student who was going to Westmore Oaks, but I have an aunt and uncle, they'll be staying within the summer that lives over by Southport, I can enroll my student into the Southport program, so it gives access to students to go to whichever site is closest to where they're going to be staying for the summer. In addition to that, we are currently working with transportation to provide transportation to and from the sites for students who sign up for non-home school sites, so that way they can still get to programs and is safe way, not having to walk more than 15, 20 minutes to a, to a site. And as you'd also see, our program hours will be running from 7:00 AM to 5:30 PM to get that full nine-hour care for the families. Next slide. And again, as mentioned earlier, we, one of our things will be academic intervention. So the way we'll do this is we'll be using data from the end of the school year, and for those students who have enrolled in the programs, we will be assessing that data, and then from there, for we'll be selecting those students who we feel that would need the, based on scores, to get the daily math, the read intervention, a couple hours a day with the teachers that we'll be hiring on, hiring, hiring on to work with the students. And then once interventions are done, they would rejoin the rest of the group to move into the enrichment activities, which again, will be a lot of hands-on, a lot of activity, a lot of movement. I believe our kids will probably be tired at the end of each day, but wanting to come back for more. If I were a student, I know I would want to come to one of our programs. Next slide. And talking about our Richmond opportunities, so we are going to do six major focus, or FOKI, sorry. So we're going to focus on art, science, music, sports, social, emotional learning, and just having fun. So these are some of the providers we have already reached out to, some of them we are in the middle of finalizing contracts, some contracts we, I believe, have been finalized. The one thing that I really want to talk about is our Ninja Coalition. That is going to be a company that we are partnering with to do our big kickoff in the first week of school. So they are going to come to, oh, excuse me, sorry. They will be showing up and setting up a American Ninja Warrior-style obstacle course at the Riverbank Gym. It'll be there for our first week, and it's going to be our big kickoff, so that way every student in our programs at the school sites will be able, have an opportunity to come there, come try their self-out on the obstacle course. So, you know, Monday might be Riverbank Day, Tuesday, we would get students from Stonegate to come over, Wednesday would possibly Elkhorn, Thursday, Bridgeway, Friday, I forgot the last school, sorry. But all the schools have an opportunity to come, try out the obstacle course, to do our big kickoff, to get the buzz going, that we're going to have a fun and eventful summer for the students. I also want to highlight that we will continuing our, continuing our work with the Storm Program, they come in and do SCL with the students. I've actually witnessed one of the lessons the other day, got the kids engaged, really excited. Their coach has been phenomenal so far in our first week of launching the programs there. And the kids have really gravitated towards his teachings. And I also got to see him teach between a second and third grade group and a four, five group. And just the way he was able to switch his teaching styles to match what the kids need are, were, was pretty great. And as we all know, fourth and fifth graders are a little judgmental, but they cut on pretty quickly to his teaching. And the other one that I'm really excited about too, that we've talked, that we've heard feedback was that sixth through eighth grade sometimes get the short end of the stick. So with Department of Sound, they will be continuing our contract because they do focus on music and DJ, DJing. They will be doing our site visits. See if we got some excitement already. So we will be doing our first site visits with the sites on Monday to get them going. And they will continue on through the summer as well and talking to some of the site leads. They're really excited for it too, because they feel like now their sixth and eighth grade students will have something to do during these programs. So I wanted to highlight kind of those three that will be moving on through the summer. Next slide, please. And up here is just what is this, this could just be a sample of what would be like if, if you were a student at one of our programs. On the left hand side, you can see what a regular camp day would look like. So you have your check ins, morning activities, based on themes, you have lunch, you have lunch recess. A summer reading challenge, so we can still have literacy as a focus. Again, moving into an afternoon theme, a small snack as well. Moving into group activities and then ending the day. With the closing circle and then outdoor play in free time for the students. On the right hand side could look, that was the schedule could look like if they are doing field trips. So we can still have the activities, but we'd shift things around the base on if it's a morning field trip or an afternoon field trip. So that way we can have, give students those experiential opportunities to go out and beyond their community to see what is out there. But also still maintain the focus of what we're focusing on during the summertime. And right now we are in the midst of communicating and working with transportation to get field trips approval. So we can get those students experiences that I know they will probably not forget, knowing that, you know, that, that they won't forget and be excited to talk about and come back the next day to see what's next. Next slide. And that is for, that is it for me. I'm going to hand it back over to Rahelie and she will finish up our conversation.
As you can see, we have lots and lots of fun things going on for this. I mean, I feel like I, I, I can't sleep most nights because the, all those, that last slide is in my head with all the different programs and possibilities. Actually, yesterday when the president was talking and he said the word possibilities, I'm like, oh, I should say that at the board meeting. Possibilities is what's happening right now because of this funding. So this is a really good time for after school programs. Next slide, please. So because of that, we have lots of plans coming up, not just this year. One of the big things that we've been talking to with Monique has been adding portables to some of our sites that runs after school programs, but they don't have their own space. A lot of places that we're running program, they have very small spaces. So it would be great to have our own portable where we could store our equipment and computers. So that's, that's a plan. The other plan is expanding our after school program from the current 700 students that we're serving to hopefully doubling to 1,400. And the, the, the number one thing on my mind and my list is the last one, providing additional social emotional learning and mental health support to our students. Maybe we could hire some extra professionals that could be there just for our after school program where they could do some one on one with the kids. So that, that is like, these are my wish lists and hopefully we can start checking them off soon. Next slide. So this has been a team effort. We, we just started, but it's literally every department has a hand in, in this. From business to HR, food services, transportation, as we said, tech, student services. I, I really thank the YMCA champions and the city of West Sacramento for being very flexible and working with us so far. Also, I wanted to mention our ELD and special services, our summer school, EL, summer school that runs every year. With the help of my wonderful friend here, Stacy and Carla with the special ed, we are going to partner up with them. So the students who are in the EL summer school or in the ESY program can join the after school program. Will be at the same site so they can just finish up and the teachers release them to the after school. And they could join us for all those fun things that we have planned and be part of that. So definitely we're trying to reach every student in our district. That is the goal to try to reach out to everyone. Last slide is I want to thank our team, Ryan, our, our amazing coordinator. Our brand new admin assistant Denise, who just joined us this week, as well as Mari Sella, our family support specialist. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm looking and is this public comment, not for this?
Yes.
It is for this. Okay, we have a public comment. Sorry, I want to make sure I get it right on my document I'm looking at. So Maria, Elena, Sepulveda, welcome back.
Hi. So the reason why I'm commenting on this is because again, when I met with those parents, the after school program that they're currently receiving. They said it's a lot of playtime, there's not a lot of structure. I looked at this and it looks really exciting. I looked at it before the board meeting. I have some, well, first I'd like to thank you for that, that guideline that you give, the checklist. Because I think as a community member, it really gives you the opportunity to see where these proposals are matching up, right? So thank you for that. So I, I, I used to go to the West Sac of the summer programs when I was a kid and they're great. But again, there's not really that structure. So I'm wondering if you've considered partnering with the PAVE program from Sacramento State. Which is a partnership, partnerships to advance the value of education. So they will focus on your LCAP and how those tutors can provide services that meet with that. I saw that you are focusing on foster youth and ELLs. That's important. Foster youth can often feel excluded. So having something that is focused on them is huge. As far as ELLs go, not every district has a TK after school program and parents are like, I need that because sometimes programs are only half day. So that's huge, but back to the ELLs. So as you may or may not know, if they're not reclassified by the time they get to the secondary level, they lose out on classes. For electives and things like that. As it was just mentioned, your students are segregated as ELLs because they need that extra support. So implementing a program where they're going to be included and not built like they're separated from their peers is huge. There's a lot of good going on here. But if you're short staff, I don't know how you're going to get teachers to show up to be a part of this. So I would really, really suggest reaching out to Sac State or even the lovely UC that you have in Yellow County and seeing if they have any programs. But I know for sure Sac State has PAVE and they will work with your LCAP and you should really look into partnering with them. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that resource. So coming up to the board, the board comments.
Thank you. Thank you for that presentation. As someone who, before serving on the board, I had, and before ELOP funding, right? Had the opportunity to, to serve our West Sac students through, through the summer program and enrichment program. So I'm glad to hear that the enthusiasm is still there and I'm excited for that. Just some, some questions. The first one, do, do we, I believe back then we, we did do this, but do we reach out or do we promote opportunities for community service or internships to our high school students? Are we still doing that currently?
Yes, right. We are currently doing that through our ACES program. So the high school kids sign up with ACES and they get volunteer hours. And I think they actually get paid for working with our after school program. Actually, a lot of our existing staff are former River City High School students. So they just stay with us. So yes, to answer that.
Perfect, perfect. And then this is just something that I seen, I think it was in central California. But I, I, I saw that during the summer, high school students took it in as an opportunity to create like club pathways. For like the eighth and seventh grade students going into high school, just so that they can almost get the, 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 the pre experience before going into high school as to what was available. And they could become part of like the pre club in a sense. But that's what they call the club pathways and that kind of gave some more structure and some more enrichment for, for our students. So I don't know if that's a thing, but it's definitely something that I, that I've seen in, in other school districts.
Yeah, that's not built into the exact plan that was presented here tonight. However, our school district does do that. So for example, at River City High School, they have a summer bridge program. That takes the incoming eighth graders specifically, and they take them around the campus. And the big part is to try to introduce them to campus life and what the possibilities are. New word, possibilities. All right. So they, they will introduce them to that and clubs are definitely a big part. It's always been a belief of our staff at River City High School to, that, that students that are involved have a much greater chance for success. And being more fulfilled at high school, which means better attendance, better everything. And so that, that is something that has been embedded with River City High School. And Washington Middle College High School is doing similar things for, for quite a while now.
That's it for me. Thank you.
I just have a really small question and it really has to do with, in February, you plan to gather input through surveys. And I just heard an earlier presentation saying they're going to gather input through surveys. And so my question is to you, how are you going to differentiate your survey and your need from other surveys that are going to be happening so that our parents know that this is specific to your after school and how it's going to affect them? Because I'm a parent and I get multiple surveys. And I don't know if I've already answered it and if I didn't answer it. If it's important to me, if it's not, and/or if this is just a follow up or it's a lot. And I like giving you guys all my input, but a lot of times if I don't have the time, I won't do it. And then I feel bad later because I feel like I missed on an opportunity. So is there another form other than surveys and that you guys might go about asking or getting that input?
That's a great comment. And believe me, in ed services, we're always talking about how we're trying not to overwhelm parents with a lot of surveys. I could tell you that with the after school program, whenever I do send something out, it's, that is like the big red flag for families. Like, oh my gosh, and you know, childcare and that. So if they don't answer anything, they do answer that one because they really are, everybody needs childcare. I understand I'm a, I'm a mom, so I know that how important childcare is. And we do try to, you know, other than surveys, there are other ways that we could reach families. We do have our own in ACES with the families that are currently at ACES. We have a different way of reaching those families. So we might use that with that different software that we have. And then there are a lot of families that, you know, are not electronically savvy. And so we've talked about with your ghosts about doing actual flyers in student backpacks. You know, so that way that might help, you know.
For some, I'm already thinking, okay, my kid is going, I, I didn't even get a field trip permission slip until the day of, because my child forgot. So and it wasn't until the school called saying, hey, we need this permission slip so they could go. So I can already see that being another, you got a lot on your plate. I'm, I'm gonna wish you the best of luck to get the word out. But if we can somehow make it to where people, parents are going to give you that input of what they need, I think that would be great.
Yes, because we, this is for the families and parents. So the best way to, to know what they want is to ask them. We do have teacher liaisons that work for the ACES program at each site. And we met actually a couple of weeks ago and I highlighted, I said, you guys are my boots on the ground at each school to make sure every family gets these, this information. So I'm hoping that that really helps.
Yeah, so I was wondering, do we have like a matrix or a way, a rubric of some kind to measure how some of our after school programs are working?
As far as.
For as in, go ahead.
So, so I could tell you that the last, I wouldn't call it a matrix, but our FPM, which happened, not the last FPM, the federal monitoring program. So the, we had the state come and do an audit of our after school program right before COVID. And we passed with, with flying colors. They, they were very impressed with our program. Now, after that, we've had staffing issues, but that's just because of COVID. And we are now this year, I feel like is the first year that we're back to, getting back to where we were, where we're fully staffed. And things are moving along. And that actually brings me to the other point about staffing is that we, this is part of the reason we're partnering with other, so it's not just one program. So we have many different entities who are all starting to hire because we've been having this conversation for a while. So I think that's really going to help the staffing issue not happen for summer.
And then do we consider YMCA and Champions educational enrichment programs? Or just more like after, after school?
So they are more after school care. So the education piece will be provided by us where we will hire teachers who normally want to do it through summer booths. They've been doing it before and reaching out to the students. So now they can, the YMCA will be there, but they, let's say a third grade teacher can come and pull 10 kids and do some strategic intervention with them and then release them back to the program. And I think that's something that was not happening before, so it's new.
And then I swear I'm not trying to play gotcha with this question. So just, please don't think that I am. You know, for many years, especially earlier on in the, my time on the board, when my child was younger. And it made me think more about after school care. I, I and trustee Kirby Gonzalez were both very vocal about pushing to get more after school care resources at our campuses. And we ended up expanding our, you know, our use of YMCA and Champions. One of the things that was kind of a barrier into increasing our spacing capacity at Bridgeway Island was the fact that there's no space or capacity. But one of your slides said, we can put portables at Bridgeway Island. I was told on several occasions that that was not possible. So I'm saying the question is, is it now possible? Do we have the.
I think it's possible. That's what they're telling me, that it's possible.
I like possibilities. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you. We have to be also, just to be transparent, some of these opportunities that we shared with you tonight would not be possible without the new funding. That comes with it, that has definitely increased the possibilities. And so we are, you, you saw the slide that had all the different, this is all very connected with all the departments at Washington Unified. It's not just an, although Rahelie leads the work with expanded learning, it's very connected with all of our departments. Naturally, when we talk about portables, that is something that we obviously will work with facilities in our business office quite a bit with. So I don't know if our assistant soup has anything to say, but in terms of what is possible. But go ahead, tell us the possibilities, Monique.
I like the word possibilities. Can you hear me okay? Is my mic on? So I want to say is we are looking into the possibility of putting portables at Bridgeway. Currently what we're doing is identifying an architect to evaluate our schools to see what those possibilities are. And so I'm cautious about saying without a doubt, we can add a portable there. And that's why normally I wouldn't hop in, but I want to make sure that we clarify that we're at the beginning stages. And we want to be able to provide adequate, more than adequate resources for our after school programs and identifying places to be able to place portable so they can have their own space is one of our priorities.
And to your point, trustee. And to your point, trustee Pizzotti, we we acknowledge that there is a very strong need. And so this is something that we are looking into to see if we can fit it, make it work with our plans.
Right. So I, to hear what you're saying correctly, correctly is that it might be possible to not, not necessarily possible, but it might be. There is the hope.
That was my wishlist.
Okay, okay, gotcha. We're good. We're good. Thank you very much.
I think I'm going to make a point or a comment on the portable space because we definitely have facility issues. And we know what we do at Bridgeway. I was just recently in a classroom there that serving resource, somebody who even spoke here and there was not enough space clearly. And and so but I want to just bring this up. It's a past conversation about portables. And that is that we had talked about not adding, let's put a pin on this amazing program just in for our philosophy, is not putting in portables because if you'll look currently, for example, District Office has some abandoned portables. The old Westmore Oaks has some abandoned portables. Elkhorn, thank goodness, is getting remodeled because they have some bad portables. Bridgeway Island has some portables that we had to go through and deal with on air conditioning and others. So two bonds ago, we did do some expansion at Bridgeway Island, but it was not portables. It was like modulators, which is that middle schooling. So I just want to caution us, whatever this conversation is, I don't want to derail it from how great this is, but the facility, facilities considers that and just to add the history of that, that we do want to make sure we do what we can with the money we can, but that we're smart and careful about it because we don't want to then have some of our portables, we can't even give away for free. And there are costs now to take apart and they're not so great. So that's why I just want to caution us a little bit with that thought. But in terms of this, this work is thrilling as a, as a mom, as a educator, just as a human. I was working with teachers in Rancho Cordova recently around the community schools work that we're also doing here. And we, I was gathering their input for their planning grants and we just, it was a wishlist of all the things you want, all your hopes and dreams. And I feel like regularly I come here and you make all the hopes and dreams a reality. And we look at them on paper and here, I mean, here they are. All of the things that we know we want for our kids, all of the enrichment pieces. This last winter break was long for our families. It was great. We had professional development, but it made it even a little bit longer for our families. And, you know, I had a lot of single parents reach out to me too of, I don't know what to do with my children. I don't have the finances to cover this long break. And so this is just a beautiful solution and it's such a win win for our students and all that we can offer them academically, but then whole child. So I just cannot thank you enough for this. This is thrilling and just really exciting. And whatever we can do to support you and make it happen. You know, we're here to do that. I think I speak for everyone when I say that. So thank you so much.
We want to invite you to the Ninja Coalition because they actually said, yeah, they said it's open to staff. So one of those days you guys should come over and and try it. It will be really fun.
I don't, that's and I should clarify that trustee Venegas is not always a DJ. It's just for our school nonprofit events when our PTOs talk him into it, he'll do it. All right. Thank you so much. All right, let me get back to my schedule here. So that takes us now to our consent agenda. Are there any items or changes to make to the consent agenda?
No, I didn't want to make a change. I just kind of wanted to point something out to the trustees that there's two really very important items on this consent agenda, at least I think. You know, one is our California Pro Start Cup that it's, it's a great competition that really showcases the state's, you know, you know, top culinary academy students. And our, our students, you know, which we take great pride in, especially in our culinary academy, are going to be taking part in that. And this is an overnight field trip for that. So I just wanted to call a shout out to that because we love our culinary kids and we have an amazing facility and an amazing, an amazing program. So much shout out to you, Harry.
And you can enjoy pancakes.
Right. Yeah.
From our culinary students. It's not really agendized to say this.
It's not, but.
Okay.
And then the other one was the overnight field trip for the California Association of Student Leaders. And as you know, we're always trying to promote our student leaders. So I just wanted to highlight some of the things that this nonprofit is showcasing statewide network which facilitates the development of ethical, responsible, you know, leaders in our schools, student leaders in our schools. And I just think this is a very important program for our kids to be participating in. So I just wanted to make sure we call attention to that as we pass this consent agenda. And with that, I would move our consent.
Okay, we have a motion by trustee Pizzotti.
Second.
By clerk coffee, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye to vote aye. Thank you. And that takes us down to action items. This is exciting as we're talking about facilities. So approval of the agreement of the Architect's Tool Services with PKW Architects Inc. Force Safety and Security Assessment of the Westfield Village Modernization Project. Assistant Superintendent Business Services, Monique Sova. Thank you. So we are requesting approval of this agreement with TBK Architects to do a security assessment of the design plans for our Westfield Modernization Project. What the goal is with the $4,800 cost for this contract is to look at our current plans before we get too far and start breaking ground to assess the safety and security and identify any vulnerabilities we might have. So we can make those changes now in this current design phase so that we can make sure that we're doing all we can do to protect our students and thank you. Okay, are there any comments? I have just a comment I'll make as we approve this. I know I brought it up in the past that we emphasize with the architects looking at how we can reduce our carbon footprint with our building and calling out any green building we can do with that. I know I've said before that San Diego Unified is a good model for that. And then I'll just share here because it ties in that I was just met with Doris Matsui's office and they said that there might be some opportunities for broadband grants. And so as we modernize our schools, we might need to do some broadband in there and maybe we can maximize our money we're spending for that. Wonderful. Okay. And with that, are there any approvals or a motion?
I move.
Okay, motion by trustee Venegas.
I'll say.
Seconded in by trustee Pizzotti, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye to vote aye. Thank you. Thank you. All right, that takes us to Board Governance. And this is a discussion for us to have about the electronic public comments discussion. And I was going to take this unless you want to say anything.
No, just want to share that we value public comments and understand how important that is for us to ensure the public has the opportunity to share their thoughts and opinions with the board. And so this is really a discussion about a different way to make sure that we have access to any public comments that are written. And I know board president Kirby Gonzalez was wanting to share a little bit.
Sure. Thank you. Okay. I wanted to just share the process pre-COVID that we were doing and then we can discuss maybe the ideas of what to do moving forward because I think it can be better than what it was, you know, we can improve upon how we take public comment. But from then, but also look at how we're doing it now. So and we also have a legal write up on this too, which we can send to the full board. If you're interested to just let us know that we can take public comment. Really, it's the board's discretion that we do. So in the past, public comment was only come and speak at the dais. And that was the only way to get public comment. It could not be sent to us electronically and put into the record in any way. And so currently what we've been doing is people can well, then for COVID, for a long time, when we were virtual, people could call in through Zoom. And then that went away. Some districts still allow that where people can call in during the meeting. But what we've been doing is people can submit their public comments and then they're read here. And then they also get put into the board packet. And one thing that I've been concerned about with that or just full disclosure, I think it's really important to have those public comments. But when we are reading the public comments, we have our own tone when we're reading somebody else's comments. If somebody tunes in and you listen to me speaking, you don't know when you listen just for a blip, if those are my comments that I'm making or if I'm reading somebody else's public comments. So I feel like many other boards now, what they're doing is they say you submit the public comment. And then the full board, we would agree that we will read our emails before we come to the meeting so that we all see the email, the comments before we come in so it can help influence us. And then they get put into the public record. So the whole public can see them. They're in the public record, which they were not before. But there's a way to, of course, people can always just email us too. But there's a way if they want it in public record that they can do it that way more formally than what we had before. I'm trying to think if I'm missing anything with that. So that is what I would propose that I would like to do. And then if as a board, that's what I was going to say, if as a board member you ever wanted to read that or there was one you want to say you have your board comments later and you always could do that too. So if something comes out, you can of course always speak. So that was my, what I wanted to throw out there and I'd love to hear.
Yeah, sure. So you're right. Pre-COVID, the only comments that were allowed to be made were at the dais and that was it. Once COVID shut us all down, we had, you can call in by phone, you could do it by Zoom and and not or, but and your comments would be read. Everybody's comments were read because the issue of COVID was such a sensitive subject. And anonymous for that matter, yeah, and anonymous for that matter. Which also was, is a little troubling. So all of those things were happening at one time. I actually like this proposal. It gets us back to the business of doing, you know, the work of the board. And it also allows us to be prepped and ready for things that may, you know, approach us from the constituent standpoint. If they have a concern, we can see that ahead of time from what they say and saves them on the, you know, on the, you know, sometimes it's a chore to get down here and testify before a diocese or before, you know, the board. Sometimes people are nervous and don't want to. So it gives them still that opportunity while we still have that ability to receive information still while making our meetings concise. I agree. I like the idea.
Yes, my, my experience has only been post-COVID. So I'm 100% with it.
I know nothing different. I don't know, but I'm going to go with the consensus on this as long as if that is the way that we are to be given the information, as long as we're given the information so we can, like you said, be prepped beforehand, I think it's a good idea.
And then, so on process, and by the way, we should be live streaming right now. That's also been an issue that we haven't been live streaming for a long time. And that was, I know our community's expectations. So I believe we are back to that finally tonight. But the other piece to this is then we all see the public comment before the meeting versus just hearing it within. So it's, it is a nice, I think, trade off. I appreciate that. So my thought, Mario, is because we want the public to know this. We want it to be on our website so that they can be prepared for it so that there's, you know, not a change that they, we want to be very transparent in that. Currently, are the public comments in by noon? Am I correct on that?
The deadline is as soon as the agenda is published. It's from that Monday afternoon to the day of the board meeting at noon. I do extend it to 12:30 just to give a bit of a grace period. I review them and send them to yourself before the board meeting.
Do you, what would be a reasonable timeline to receive those and then send it to the full board on that Thursday?
As long as, I mean, I, today I sent them to you at three o'clock just because there was other requests that came in later. If everybody's okay with like a three o'clock time, then that's, I could just adjust the alarm on myself or the remind, not alarm, sorry. The fire drill will go off. No, I could just put the reminder because it's a Google sheet. So I'll just adjust the Google sheet to three o'clock and then it pops up saying the form is closed. I then transfer them. And so that's how
Would that be reasonable for you?
It's reasonable for myself. I just want to ensure that the board also has ample time to receive it.
Is three o'clock enough time for everybody to check email before we come? Three to five? Before we come, 5:30 is our start. Okay. And so then on the wording, let's just put that it will be emailed to the board for them to read prior to the meeting. And and that it will be also recorded in the minutes of the meeting.
There was a recommendation on the legal document that you, or correspondence that you referenced earlier that the board either adopt a resolution or take action. So if you want to take action tonight, we can do so. Saying that you want to make a motion for this.
I will make a mooch.
I'll second.
Okay. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye to vote aye. Thank you. Okay. All right. So then that takes us now to the first read and adoption of policy number 5132 Dress and Grooming. Assistant Superintendent of Education Services, Dan Hoisich. Every year.
Thank you. So we don't want to call this an annual approval, do we? So submitted for board approval is policy number 5132 Dress and Grooming. This policy was presented to the policy subcommittee for discussion and feedback on December 14th of 2022 and on February 1, 2023. The policy subcommittee has approved this for the board's review and adoption. And we are asking you tonight to accept this and move this forward so we can make this our new policy. Of course, standing okay, so standing, standing behind me is Dr. Jay Burns and he has been leading the process, getting feedback from our students and our staff on this particular topic. So we do believe we have a definitely improved policy to move forward for, for everyone tonight.
Since this was your committee, do you want to share any clerk coffee thoughts of this?
Ah, this was very much like, well, say it was my very first subcommittee meeting that I've attended was very lively in the sense of there were parents. There were students, there were principals, educators, all had all had an opinion on what should be or what should not be. Discussion was very lively. And for lack of a better word, and or phrase, I should say. But I think this is definitely a move in the right direction for everybody. And the reason I say that is because of the fact that we're taking out, I like to think we're taking out specifics. So we are not looking at a certain thing as from a female's standpoint. It's no longer, I want to say dated in some areas. It's some area, like one of the rules was pretty like it's moot, like we don't need to say that because it's expected. And in addition, it just I think aligns a lot more with where we want our students to go when they become adults. Because honestly, as a dress code, we are grooming our children for the workforce and what is expected of them. And I do believe that this exemplifies that. And I think they did a wonderful job at making a recommendation the first time. And of course, we made some little tweaks here and there, but it's still pretty awesome, I will say.
Yeah, I would, I would just like to say thank you for your work on this and thank you for removing the shorts length. My daughter appreciates that because My daughter appreciates that because the number of times she's had to been talked to about her shorts being too short. It's just a known fact that girls' shorts are made differently in length than boy shorts. And, you know, it's the number one complaint I heard from parents everywhere. Parents of daughters, right? Like this is, I would constantly get this. So I do appreciate that. One thing I wanted, I was glad to hear is that students had input in this. And that it was more of a general statement and things were taken out that were specific to gender. And I do appreciate that. Overall, this, this is a much better document, and I am very thankful.
I have just one, and I appreciate this as well. I have just one, when it says clothing must cover undergarments, however waistbands and bra straps can show. I, I am okay with this language, but when it says can show, I almost feel like it's like promoting, like, if it could be just switched to like clothing must cover undergarments, however waistbands and bra straps will not be penalized or will not, that will be accepted, you know, are excluded. Something like that versus, it's just a way of wording things positively, like. I would prefer that. I don't know if any, how you all feel about something like that.
It's a fashion statement. Alvin Klein.
It is, but you, I wish my mom, my mom, the editor was here so she could explain the like, it's just the connotation of it. Like it can show versus however waistbands and bra straps are excluded, you know, in the covering of undergarments. If it was just worded more that way than like promoting, you know, I don't think we necessarily need to promote that everyone is showing.
I think, just to kind of add some clarification to it. So sometimes those particular items are not represented on purpose by the student. Sometimes they're, they, they, it may be just other things, other actions, other movements. And so I think I would encourage you to think about maybe leaving it the way it is, simply because the way it is, when we say it's not punished, means someone can just do it on their own. But this allows a little bit more flexibility. This, this part allows us a little bit of flexibility. So just, just for your consideration.
Well, I meant, the intent of it I agreed with that you had. It was more just the wording of can show versus waistbands and strap, like excluded from, when I said excluded, I mean, we're not going to penalize you if your waistband and bra strap shows. It was just the wording of the can show versus it's okay if it shows. All right. I'm okay with it like this. But I'm going to wake up at 1:00 AM and I'm going to type up some language. I'll come up with it and all of a sudden.
Way to talk yourself into it.
If nobody's hearing me on that, then it's my own thing. It was, I, I agree with the intent, so I support the way of the language. It was more just the wording. But the intent I agree with, so I am fine moving forward with this.
Would you, it was a lively discussion.
I know, I imagine it was very lively. And so do we have a, do we need to make a motion to approve the first read? It comes back to us.
If you, if you, yes, if you approve this, we don't have to come back. So we can actually get this done tonight.
All right. Well, then I will not wake up at 1:00 AM and change that. We'll just go with that. Okay. We have a motion.
Can I motion?
Yes, you can.
I want a motion to move this.
Yes, you can. Okay, motion made by Clerk Coffee, seconded by Trustee Pizzotti. All in favor?
Aye.
I too.
And if we come back annually, I promise you I will attend that board meeting.
I will find you. You know where you're at.
You know we'll hire you. Okay, next one up is the first read and adoption of administrative regulations. AR number 6173.1 Education for Foster Youth. Again, Mr. Moisich, Assistant Superintendent of Education.
Yes, thank you. AR number 6173.1 for Education for Foster Youth has been updated and modified to include recommendations made by the California School Boards Association. This AR was presented to the policy subcommittee for discussion and feedback on December 14th, 2022. And on February 1, 2023. This, the policy subcommittee has approved this policy for board review and adoption. And as was the case with the previous policy, Dr. Jay Burns had led the process the entire time, working with staff to get feedback as well as the CSBA recommendations. And so we're hoping tonight that you can accept this, and we can put this into play if you do.
Any comments? Want to give any comments? You were in that one as well?
I was in that one, but this was Jackie's baby. It was like, so she actually had a lot more to say about it because she wrote the law on it. So she made sure that it was, it was correct, that it was where it needed to be, and in that. Her presence is not here, but it will be here in this. That's all I have to say.
Okay. Can we, sorry, can we have a motion to approve?
I'm moved. Second.
Okay, moved by Trustee Benegas, seconded by Trustee Pizzotti. All in favor? I too vote aye. This is important. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, great. Thank you so much. Now that takes us to board and superintendent comments. Dr. Hildreth.
Thank you, President Kirby Gonzalez. Want to highlight this meeting again. It's been so good to, to know that we have the opportunity to give Stan a proper sendoff. Hope you feel the love from the, you know, so many. And it's not, not often that, you know, you tell people, give them their flowers while they're here. So that was what this was about. We hadn't really told Stan we were going to do so. It was kind of a good surprise. So that was a great way to start the meeting. I do want to start with saying a real thank you to our WSTA and CSEA presidents in terms of communication and collaboration. And there are times when we all are reflective. And you want to be able to have a really authentic conversation. And I know I have found that I have that ability with both WSTA President Doug Nepp and CSEA President Daniel Gandara, where we can just share. But the benefits of that conversation is we're usually also looking for solutions. Like here are the concerns. How do we work together in moving forward and finding some solutions? So I just want to highlight that that has been my experience. And really with appreciation that we're going to continue in that mode and that we hear you. And we value and respect you. And we also hear and value and respect our administrators. And know that there is a lens and a perspective for everyone in the seat that they sit. And so the more that we can acknowledge that and come together, I think that's one of the things that makes Washington Unified unique in the experiences that I have. So I just wanted to highlight that and, and hope that that's something that we can continue. I want to highlight that it's Black History Month. And I want to share a quote from President Biden's 2023 proclamation commemorating this occasion. He shared that during National Black History Month, "We celebrate the legacy of Black Americans whose power to lead, to overcome, and to expand the meaning and practice of American democracy has helped our nation become a more fair and just society." "This country was established upon the, upon the profound but simple idea that all people are created equal and should be treated equally throughout their life." And I, I believe that with our focus on our strategic plan and how we are intentional about the students and the populations that we serve, that this is something that, that we are able to highlight in our equity agenda. And it gives me great motivation and makes Washington Unified a place I think people love to work in, and it's a great community. And I appreciate our schools being excited to take students to a performance that celebrates Black history. And being in a city that's not as large as maybe Los Angeles or Chicago or New York, where you might have these opportunities more frequently. For us to be able to bring that level of a performance to Sacramento and for our students and staff and schools to be excited to give our kids that experience. So I, I really appreciate the enthusiasm to go and the feedback that we receive. I want to highlight that it's National School Counseling Week. And we know that our counselors do an amazing job of supporting our, our students. And we know our counselors also support our staff. And, you know, just somebody you need to talk to. So we want to highlight their experience and the degrees and the work that they have. And they help us really stay grounded and focus on what's important and help, help us all and our students find some type of life balance. It was interesting when we were talking about surveys. Now that's going to be on my mind, like how do we, how do we get feedback in other ways of surveys? But we have another survey. A good, and they're all good. That's the problem. Everything we want to know is because we want your input. But we're excited because we have this community schools grant with our partner with United Way California Capital Region. And we're one of only 42 districts in the United States to have received this community school federal funding, $500,000 for the next five years to support Riverbank Elementary and River City High School. And it really is, the point is that we want our schools to be the neighborhood hubs to provide healthcare, mentoring, expanded learning programs, just like a one-stop shop. I call them like the school 7-Eleven. Something where you could just go and have your needs met. We still are moving forward with making sure we have wellness centers at every site. And, and hopefully in March, we're going to have an update about where we are with wellness centers to be ready for August. But part of the community schools process is community listening sessions. So outside of a survey, we have had several listening sessions at Riverbank, at River City. We've had them in different times, in the morning, in the evening, in the afternoon, in different languages. Because the point is, we need to know what support and resources does the community need so that we can embed that in what we do in making this model. So although we've had listening sessions, we do have a feedback survey that is on our website. But to Clerk Coffee's point, when you know the purpose of the survey, then people can choose, like, I don't have a lot of time, but this is a survey I'm going to really fill out. And so already, we just launched it, I believe, this week, and we already have about 150 responses. So that lets us know that the word is getting out about what we want to implement in our communities. And we're asking what mental health supports do you need? What do your children need? And they're beginning to give us this feedback. So that's very helpful. I want to thank our administrators who pause and take time when I come because I want to make sure that I'm able to highlight the great things that are happening at schools. And sometimes you only know that by going there and talking to people. And so I was able to do school visits at Elkhorn with Principal Garcia and visit classrooms and really see the engagement activities. I was able to visit Riverbank with Principal Rodriguez. And we really had a good conversation about what support looks like. What kinds of supports would be helpful from the administration perspective? She shared what would be helpful from the feedback she gets from, from her teachers. She shared what would be helpful from what she hears from her parents and her families. She shared what the needs were for classified staff. So that's another way, just want to let people know how I'm getting information to know what we need to do is not only surveys, listening sessions, but when I am talking to our, our school leaders, they are, are sharing what, what they need because they're focused on, I want my school to be the best school, you know, in, in the district. So she had a teddy bear clinic, Kaiser student, residents came and they met with the kindergarten classes. And they were teaching them about, you know, healthcare using of stuffed animals. So it was very, very cute and the kids were excited. And then they want to tell you about the time when they fell and they hit their head and they needed a Band-Aid. And you get all of that information, but it was great. And then I was able to attend Coffee with the Principal at WUVA. And so it was really exciting to hear from our families in person whose children are in a virtual setting. But that is a program that's working for those families. And they were talking about ways that they could get more engaged and figuring out how do you help socialization of students who are in a virtual setting? So it was really meaningful dialogue. So I appreciate Principal Diavobus's willingness to engage and invite, invite me and parents were still open to let us know what, what we needed. I think we've highlighted that tomorrow, no, Saturday, where our, our River City High School FFA and Culinary Arts student, students are hosting a Pancake Breakfast fundraiser. It's Saturday at the Bright Garden Cafe on Todd Hunter. So hopefully people can support. And a lot of work is happening, but we have two short weeks. So we have, next week is a four-day week because we have our President's Day. Lincoln President's Day, we will celebrate on Friday. And then that Monday, we will celebrate Washington's Day. So a, a good break, but two short weeks and the work doesn't stop. So thank you already to all of our staff who we know still are thinking about what's going to happen and doing lesson planning and all those things, even when they're on a break. And that's it for me.
Thank you, Trustee Pizzotti.
Thank you. So in the spirit of Black History Month and the fact that I work in politics, I have to quote one of my favorite politicians. "Change will not come if we wait for some other person or some other time. We are the ones we've been waiting for. We are the change that we seek." And that's President Barack Obama who said that. And I find this quote so uplifting as it really hits home with the work that we're doing, especially with our equity-based strategic plan. We are the ones that need to implement and work this plan. And it just, it's one of my all-time favorite quotes because it's, we, the people need to do the act. You know, it's, we have to do this now. And so as we celebrate Black History Month, this, this quote really resonated with me. And especially as you were mentioning, all the things that in every single agenda item is, you know, based in our strategic plan. It shows that we are working the plan. So I just wanted to give thanks to the district and the staff for doing. I just want to say to President Nepp and President Gandara, I hear you, and I'm sorry if I personally have not been as responsive on following up. I, I will accept responsibility for my lack of follow-up when comments were made. And that is on me, and I do apologize. Next, I would like to say to Stan again, one of the things that I'm going to miss the most about you is your uplifting inspirational emails that you send out. You know, I, I really appreciate the, you know, basically seeing in the morning this quote from, you know, some inspirational leader, you know, telling us all to have a great day and be a change maker. And that just kind of encapsulates who you are as a person. So I, I just wanted you to know that, you know, in these eight years, seeing those emails were very, you know, very telling, just about you and your character. you know, very telling, just about you and your, your email. And with that, I'll end.
All right, Trustee Benega.
All right. I'm just going to leave it with a word. I won't say one word, but I'll leave it with a word. And, and the word that comes to mind is authentic. And, and I just have to say how grateful I am to go from the moment of, of, you know, acknowledging the work that Stan, that you've done, to also hearing President Nepp and, and being able to express, being able to express. Like, if we, if we really think about the environment we've created where we can express and find a way forward, that's called being in a healthy environment, being able to hear, hear each other out. So I, too, would like to apologize and, and as well as find ways to, to, to be better and to be as present. So just the acknowledgement of, of the wave of the energy that was in this room from our public comment to the moment with Stan, to the enthusiasm from Rahale. Just authentic, just everything tonight was, was authentic. And I'm just grateful to be a part of, of this, of this culture that, that we've created. This, this is what, what I would say is a healthy culture. To be able to, you know, being, being honest and being authentic is, is more powerful than just saying positive words all the time. So thank you, thank you. And, and Stan, keep those emails coming. You know, you're not, you're not, we can still be part of your email list. So this is not just over. It can be, it can come from a YCOE email, but, but just include us in your, in your, in your email list. And yeah, the DJ comment, that's, that's exclusive for, for Elkhorn as of right now. So I have to talk to them and see if I can do any more work. So that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Clerk Coffee?
Aye, yes. So I'm not a Debbie Downer. I just want to make sure that I keep some things real. Riverbank didn't get to go to the play. I'm hoping that we do find a time where they can go. It would be nice if it was during this month, two weeks left, you know, saying, that was the field trip form that I needed to do at that moment. And I was like, oh, for what? But it's okay. But yeah. On another note, public comment that Maria Elena brought up, you know, asking us to verify and make sure that certain titles were on documents, like, can we make sure that all of that is properly, you know, where it needs to be? Because that is really important, especially since we have a huge indigenous population here within West Sacramento. And, and it, and it's important that the, that they know that it's not an overlook and or oversight. On a positive note, now we're going up. I did find out that Via, the rideshare, is offering free rides if you start in the Yolo Broderick, I mean, Yolo, sorry, in the Broderick-Bright community area, going to wherever location. As long as you start and end in Broderick and Bright, it's free. So for those that didn't know, and for those that were hoping that they needed a solution, that is an avenue. So I wanted to make sure that our kids over at Yolo got that message. I don't think a lot of them knew. Also, there's been a huge graffiti issue going around over in the, across the street from Elkhorn, across, over by Riverbank. Lot of, lot of homes getting vandalized. But I want to, this is where I'm saying it's positive. The community is coming together, and they're coming together in forces. And I'm bringing that up because of the fact that, that the community, when they come out and they say they have a voice and they want to be heard, they will make sure that they're heard. And President Nepp, I hear you, too. I hear, I hear the people. I hear what's being said. Now I'm trying to make sure that when I hear things, I know what to do. Well, that's where I'm at right now. And I want to make sure I make wise decisions and wise choices when I'm getting information. And so I'm just, I'm excited. Two months in, and I'm definitely thrown in the deep end. No, I'm just kidding. 12-foot pool. But otherwise.
Yeah, at least it was. At least it wasn't on Zoom.
Right, so we're good. So I, I just wanted to, to put that out there. I, I know that there are things that are happening, and I'm excited to see some of these changes that are occurring. And yeah, it's going to be good times. Good four years so far. That's all I got.
All right. Thank you. I was blessed to get a substitute and get to go for my own students and get to go on the field trip for Black History. And I heard our incredible bus drivers all speaking, and you know, what's the buzz? And they, they were talking about Riverbank because they were all worried, everybody was worried. You know, we want, we have a school that couldn't go. And it, just for the public to know, I wrote Dr. Hildreth, who right away was on it. I know everybody was on it with that. And it was a busing company liability issue. And so, but like a stab to the heart, you know, to hear that comment. So I appreciate that we were told that things would be worked on so that Riverbank has something special. I know that particular play because I looked at, I looked because I said, when can we get everyone here? And it was like a one-day thing and then moving on. So I'm hopeful that there's something that will be really special for the kids to get to go to. So that, I've been to that theater many, many times. I started going as a little girl with my dad at, you know, 10 years old. And, and now I have the season tickets. So I've been going all my life. And that was the first time I've ever been in that building where people were told to get up out of their seats and dance. And Principal Rob Patterson was right in the middle of the stairs, dancing away. And, and that was just such a sight to see, you know? And it was, it was really beautiful and powerful. And, but I also realized needed a little bit of debrief, especially for our younger kids, because there's a lot of big topics in there, and it was really powerful. So we came back and my daughter and some of our Girl Scouts who talked about, what were some of the things you saw? Do you understand this? And it opened up a really good conversation, you know, with Frederick Douglass and other, you know, we just had really good conversations for that, and I felt very blessed to have been there and looking forward to more of that and, and more pieces like that to when, just using that one-time money and other pieces we have wisely for our students, and hopefully that every student in this district can be a piece of those. This, we've done a lot lately, and so I just want to acknowledge and, and thank everyone here for we've had since our last board meeting, the Budget Study Board Meeting. We also had our Board Governance and Equity Board Meeting work and, and a lot of good conversations with that. I know there's a lot of preparation, preparation that goes into those meetings, and it's appreciated. I did go after the last meeting here. We heard a concern about a resource class serving students with IEPs where there's multiple teachers in the same room. And I think it really speaks to our facility challenges that have come up. And how, so as the Facility Committee and others look at our spaces and we look at adding our wellness centers, where I was really thinking too about, how can we ensure that, that our, our students are in the best environment? Or how can we even, can we break up a room? Can we put some walls in, you know, to some of our, our spaces that we have? So that it's really hard if you're trying to serve kids right here who have very, you know, specialized needs, to then have groups all over here, all in the same room. Or if somebody's in that room, especially because in their IEP, maybe they need a quiet place to take a test, but then there's other groups that are working. So I just think, I appreciated hearing that. And I know, you know, we have, you have to get creative when there's facility pieces. And so as we move forward, I think that's something to consider. How could we get creative and, and put up some walls or do something in a way to best serve students? And then I also wanted to share, because I've had so many parents ask. I think it's just that time right now, the data comes out, people are wondering how our schools are doing. They're getting anxious about what will happen in high school. So we have the eighth grade night at River City High School, which is Wednesday, February 22nd, at 6:00 PM in the River City Gym. So again, that's February 22nd, 6:00 PM in the River City Gym. It does say eighth grade parent night, but I've been telling other parents too, if you're not sure about, you know, if you want to go and see our high school programs right now, just go. If you have a seventh grader, go and see and learn. Because we do have some parents, not all of ours, but who are, you know, they even ask me sometimes when they have a kindergarten, you know, they're just really wanting to know about our programs and what's happening. And so I wanted to share that, I'd call that one out as well. And then also how we can make sure that our dashboard data that was shared last meeting and other times is up for the public, because I know with the lag and when it came out to be published, it, it just looks different how we share that data. So to make sure it goes out. And then lastly, I want to acknowledge, and I think every one here has, has had good comments with that as well, that it's important for every member of Washington Unified to feel valued, every single member, for our staff to feel valued, our get certificated, our classified, our administrators, our students, our families. And so when we hear that, that it's not, we know that we need to do better. And so committed to doing that and to making sure that we have open lines of communication and that there are times where something might be done, but it's not always communicated and shared. Here's what we did, and here's how it was addressed. And so I think that that is the piece that needs to be done better. And so my commitment is there to do that.
All right. So with that, we have our future board agenda items. We have our charter school updates. There are, so we have our, a dependent charter school under us, which is Washington Middle College. But then we also have two independent charter schools who come before this board for regular reviews. And then we do, this is not an approval process yet at this meeting, but this is our annual update. Okay, and then we have adopt of the official Washington Unified District Land Acknowledgement. I've reached out to just make sure, and maybe we have a good resource tonight, too. But I've reached out to a few tribal communities to say, who can give us the best input on our language? Because when I called the, I don't want to say it incorrectly, the State Native American Indian Museum, I, I don't know what their official title is, but I called just downtown and I talked to him about the language. And he said, oh, well, West Sacramento is really a confluence, and you also had other tribes that you're not mentioning on that. So we just seem to have a conversation just to make sure that we're accurate in it and that we want to make sure that we're reaching that. So just know that that work is happening to make sure that we're doing that. And then we have Brown Act training to be determined. Are there any other items for the board agenda that you'd like to see in the future? Not at this time? Okay. Well, then our final gift to you, Stan, is that we're going to end this meeting right now at 9:00. All right. So with that, we adjourn.